I would like to call to order the planning board meeting for January twenty first, two thousand and twenty. First on our agenda this evening is the continued discussion with Sarah Adams from CMRPC regarding zoning bylaws for solar energy system and hazardous waste facilities. So Kathy, would you mind giving us an update on Sarah coming and going and latest and greatest?
Sure. Sarah will, again, if it works out with all of you, Sarah is available to come to your next meeting. She and I both talked today and we thought that based on the changes that she had made, which I'll go through, I'll go through all the color-coded handouts that you have in front of you. They're not very professional looking, but it was, everything is in such draft state. But anyways, after your meeting on Thursday, Sarah did the updates based on your meeting. And then Amy was able to send Sarah information on Friday night. But Sarah hasn't incorporated, oh, she wants the board to talk about, you know, I mean, give her directions. But, so she hasn't incorporated those into the solar or the hazardous facility bylaw yet. But what you have in front of you for tonight, and however and what order you want to start to go through this, Carrie, is, there are two, two documents that I believe are in reddish, that say CMRPC on the upper right-hand corner. So that is the updated draft from Sarah based on your last Thursday's meeting. And then an email exchange that, with some comments from Amy, that Amy, you know, at the meeting, everyone agreed Amy would send Sarah the couple of outstanding questions or comments that she had. So Sarah then addresses them in the email that says CMRPC. And then it has my name on it, but it's from Sarah. Okay? So that's, we've got that from solar, regarding solar. And then we also have a email and an edited version from Bob Frederico, which says BF in the upper right-hand corner. So those are your three solars documents for tonight. And then, after that, you have two hazardous materials. One, again, that has CMRPC in the upper right-hand corner. And then a, some, a copy of the bylaw with some suggestions and questions from Amy that Sarah has not yet addressed.
Okay.
All right, so as far as solar, Sarah and I spoke today and thought that we could get you to resolve a couple of things tonight. And then, from there, Sarah will take your comments, hi Michelle, Sarah will take your comments from tonight, pretty much hopefully finalize the draft for your February fourth meeting.
Okay.
And Sarah is available at six o'clock, if you want to start again at six on February fourth.
So, and we can hold our placeholder in the warrant if we do them.
Yes, yes, and I can submit the language that we, well, either that Sarah has provided or, you know, if you solidify some of the questions tonight. That's the language that I can submit to the town administrator. But we still have a little bit of wiggle room before you hold your public hearing. Because you have to hold a public hearing on all the proposed zoning changes. You usually do that in March. You don't have to do it in March, you can start it earlier if you want, in February. But March gives you plenty of time, you've got two meetings in March. And then possibly if you want to meet again in the beginning of April. And so you've got, you know, three opportunities to hold your public hearing and/or continue your public hearing. And then town meeting, you know, you need to close out your hearing, make a recommendation, you know, any changes. And, you know, that's what we go to town meeting with.
So, should we start with, can we also have a placeholder for hazardous as well?
Yes, 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 yeah. Everything that we talk about, I mean, whatever you decide on tonight is, is what I will put in for warrant articles.
Okay, so, does it make sense then to the board if we focus on the two documents that say CMRPC in red in the upper corner?
And I can, if you want, Carrie, however you want to do this, but I can kind of just point out the, the big changes and then really warrant a lot of changes.
Perfect. Yeah, that'd be great.
So, you know, Sarah took your comments from the last meeting on solar. Let me just those. And at last week's meeting, what you had talked about was adding carports as an accessory use. And you had decided to go with square footage for the thresholds between small and large. Small being a thousand square feet and large being anything over a thousand square feet. So, I don't want to speak for Amy, but then Amy asked a couple of questions about setbacks. And Sarah, you have her email. Sarah kind of, and we talked about this on the phone today, she kind of made an assumption that, as did I, that you would go with, you know, what the setbacks are today in a residential district, which are, you know, thirty front, fifteen side, twenty-five rear. But there, I believe Amy had a suggestion about a hundred-foot setback?
No, I don't think so. I just asked, I did, my questions in general were to discuss setbacks. Do we think since small-scale ground-mounted was allowed, did we need any setbacks from the residents? And I did notice that some towns don't allow them in the front yard. So I just, that was what I wanted to talk about with the board. The thousand was the, um, square feet was the, the size. You know, we had said it was a thousand square feet of surface area, that wasn't a setback. I just wanted to bring up the discussion with the board tonight. Do we feel we need any different setbacks? I didn't understand because it was ground-mounted solar. You know, what, how that played out. If someone comes and says, okay, I want a thousand-foot ground-mounted solar in my yard, so it's allowed by right.
Yeah, they, they have to meet the, I mean, if that, if, if we worded the way we had worded it, they would have to meet, everyone, you know, everything has to meet the setbacks except for a shed of a certain size in our zoning bylaw. It's a very small shed and you can put that shed anywhere. You can basically put it almost right on the property line. But anything else has to observe the setbacks. So, so, so maybe Sarah just put in a hundred as an example that, that if you wanted to change it, you know, you could take care of it in, in this supplemental regulation. So that supplemental regulation on her email is not needed if you want to stay with the, with the present setbacks.
I guess my major concern was the front yard, because I think, isn't there, you can't put a shed in your front yard either, could you? By our bylaws right now?
Um, I'm, we might have to wait for Bob.
Yeah.
Bob had a meeting at six o'clock. But I'm not aware of that, but I don't.
Yeah, I guess that was just my main, I didn't know if that was a problem with other towns, if people start putting them on the front yard. I would think like in a big neighborhood, off the road, no one would see it, so it's no big deal. But if you're in a smaller neighborhood, I don't know if there's a concern about solar panels in the front yard, but maybe there isn't. I just, it was just something I wanted to talk about as a board, see what other people thought, and maybe it isn't an issue.
The, one of the things that Sarah said to me on, on the phone today was as far as the, the front yard, she said it's really, you know, towns are sort of all over the place on this. But she said, what, you know, you're, if, if you don't allow the front yard, and the front yard happens to be the best place for the solar orientation, however, you know, wherever the law is situated, wherever the person has their house or garage, then you're basically, you know, prohibiting someone from using, you know, green energy. And, and, you know, do you, do you want to do that? If it's, if it's purely aesthetics, you know, again, some, some people, doesn't, doesn't matter to them if it's in their front yard. Other people might be, might not want to see their neighbor have that in their front yard, you know, so you kind of have to weigh.
So.
It could still go on the roof, though. I wasn't trying to stop anything on the roof.
Oh, yeah, right.
Talking about grandma.
Yep.
If you have solar on the ground, do you need a fence?
For a house? No.
No, in this, what we're proposing, have we proposed, I just noticed some of Bob's stuff, and I know he's not here, but
Yes.
Were we saying you need a fence?
Yes, in the large-scale solar, that is one of the things. Bob and I talked a little bit about the fence today and, he'll be in here shortly. But the, we do, let me just find out, we do require a fence. But Bob was concerned about, and I, and I don't know if this is based on his experience with fences overall or specifically with solar in another community that he worked in, where, you know, if you just stick up poles and then, you know, and you wire the fence, but you never put the top bar across a fence, I mean, even though that in your own yard, you know, if you're using chain link, that, you know, that fence can cave and people can get over it fairly easy. My thought about that is that, you know, that's, the onus is on the property owner or the, or the, the solar company that, you know, if they want to protect their equipment and their, their, you know, that, that use on the property, then, you know, they're gonna, they're gonna put up a proper fence.
But, but for residential ground-mounted, we do not have fences?
There, no, no. So the, I found the foliage, someplace we have a fence. There's screening, landscape buffer, trees, shrubs, walls, fences, or other landscape elements. Six-foot, side impermeable fence of a maximum of six feet in height. So that is what's required, that's how it's worded in the design standards, which is section F of the, of the draft bylaw. Again, if you're looking at the one that says CMRPC in the upper right. The design standards, and then it's at the top of the following page, number four.
Okay, so what does the board think about setbacks, is issue number one, for ground-mounted solar? Any thoughts on that setback?
I think they should be the same as what we already have.
Similar?
Yeah.
Michelle, any thoughts?
I agree.
Give them the same.
I guess, I think the same. I am, I think Amy has a point regarding front yard. I don't know if that's a special consideration or not, but I don't have an answer.
Any thoughts on the front yard?
I don't have a problem with it, but since we haven't required a buffer for fencing or, you know, a natural buffer, you could say, we do it for a large scale, we require some sort of natural buffer or fencing, we could require that if it's in the front yard or something.
Right.
Or even in the backyard, you never know who's looking out to it. Although, like Kathy said, it might be someone doesn't care, whether it's under the roof or not.
Right.
But, so I've never heard of the front yard, but you never know how someone's house is positioned, do you?
You know, it's something else to think about in, or at least this is how I look at it, is, you know, you're talking about, you know, we're very focused on a, you know, a ground-mounted solar, which is new to all of us, you know, there's not a lot of, you know, houses that have it. There are some houses, but not, you know, it's not common yet for every house. But at the same time, you know, you look at, you know, people with their, you know, central air. So, you know, the units are, you know, outside, right on the property line, you know, either in the side or the back, just because that's where the builder will typically place them. You know, those aren't screened, so is that, you know, is this, you know, do you consider it the same thing? You know, maybe someone doesn't want to look at a shed, but, you know, again, these are all accessory, you know, use. I mean, air conditioning isn't an accessory use, but it's something outside of your house that's in their yard that someone else could potentially look at.
So I noticed.
So, you know, is solar, is ground-mounted solar any different? Yes, it's bigger, but it is getting smaller as the industry, you know, improves.
So on the signs for large, we have the following signage required, high voltage warning signs. Is there any high voltage issues with the small? Is there anything different about small that would not be, require a high voltage warning or?
I'm, I'm going to assume, only because the, the ground-mounted ones that I've seen in this town don't have, there's, there's no fencing, there's no signage. It's really, okay, we were talking about this in-house today. As far as, you know, something with like high voltage, that's, it's covered by the electrical code and the building code if those kinds of signs are required for, for any type of use where there's, you know, high voltage. So it's not as if, if it's not addressed specifically in this bylaw, it doesn't mean that it's not going to happen. You know, it's, there's, there's other codes that kick in.
Well, I'm just wondering if they're actually high voltage, because in that case, it seems like you would want a fence. But is that just a sign that's like our, cover our, cover ourselves so that we don't?
I think what Kathy's saying, it would be regulated under current code regardless if it was something of this high voltage in your yard. Or if it, or it would have to be adequately protected is my assumption, but.
I mean, you know, two things, not to put Bob right on the spot as he just walked in, we can ask Bob, and then I can also follow up, you know, with Sarah.
Okay. Bob, you're on the hot seat.
What do you want to know?
We have a copy of some of your concerns, edits, questions on the solar bylaw.
Right.
So did you want to speak to any of these specifically, or just welcome to just your general high level or whatever works?
Well, some of the stuff is based on my experience in another town. And some of it's based on some other research and real-world experience I've had and in teachings and with discussions with our building inspectors. A lot of the stuff in my notes talks about, you know, grammatical stuff, okay? But there's a fair amount of redundant language in here. You have to be careful right off the bat that solar typically in the building trades is for heating of hot water and heating of your home. You have to include the word photovoltaic, which gets you to the electrical generation panels, okay? So there was a couple of spots where that word should be included in the language, all right? Solar energy system roof-mounted remove the, or structure part. Roof-mounted, it should be on a building that's in currently good standing. A structure could be misconstrued as the framework that it sits on, okay, for ground mount, that sort of thing. In the residential table of uses, you should probably add a use line for large-scale ground-mount sort of volatile installations. That's in the residential table of usage. Okay? Table one par B, add photovoltaic. One of the things that I've discovered all the working here is that we've got two types of zones in town. It's business slash industrial or residential. We don't have commercial. Commercial is kind of wrapped up with business and industrial, things like that. That might be a long-term housekeeping thing. I just wanted to bring it to your attention because it's starting to, you know, it's, it's, it sounds like it's splitting hairs, but, you know, we, we just, there's no commercial language in the book. Section seven-ten-oh-six-oh, should the section apply to small-scale, site plan approval, not required for small scale. Okay. Seven-ten-oh-six-oh eight, purpose, previously developed sites. What does that mean? Okay, and then oh-six-oh B, applicability, it talks about materially, what's that, what's that trip, what's, what's that quantity? Okay? Couple of typos, again, commercial, workplace, and business, parking, ARE, that should be area.
Bob, can I just, can I?
Go ahead.
Sorry, Carrie, can I just interrupt?
No, of course.
The, under your section, because we, I don't believe that we added anything to seven dash ten dash oh, oh, no, wait, wait. Sorry, sorry, forget that, keep going. I just had the wrong section number.
Under oh-six-oh D, parentheses one, general requirements, might as well remove the word local from local building permit. It's redundant, it's going to be required town northport building permit. Let's see, oh-six-oh D two, proposed language states that site plan approval is required by the planning board, yet there is no language in oh-five-oh A-one-E to back it up. Next is, what is a protection scheme coordination study and who provides this? All right. Under D two, add section J, all requirements of the mass fire prevention code shall apply. There's a lot of stuff in here that was kind of missing that I know the fire department is going to be one of, be interested in. Access for the apparatus to get into the facility, Knox box to get through the gates, proper labeling of everything, a turnaround area. How much access, access do they need to go around the perimeter if they need to? Some do, some don't. Those are the big things, you know, from the fire department. Okay. I, I don't know, and, I just don't know, do we have a pilot plan?
That's something new to us that we tried to put in here because there were some, there was talk about the solar developers being able to not pay taxes because of some loophole that they, I forget, it was like, they didn't have to pay in twenty years, or do you remember that?
I remember, we went to a class, CMRPC, and some developers are calling themselves nonprofit, so they get a loophole out of paying taxes to the town. So some of the towns are now asking for a pilot program in advance where they pay twenty years upfront. But there was actually a developer there and he said he likes that better because it, he knows what his cost is going to be upfront. And it sets everything up, so they just said to watch for that because some developers are finding the loophole with being a nonprofit. And then they develop, they take this huge commercial spot and you're not getting any revenue on it as a town.
With a pilot plan, does that need any other action from the town, the town meeting approval?
I think it does say in there, it does need town meeting approval. I think Sarah reviewed it and wrote a couple of things.
Yep, it's in there that it does need town meeting approval.
And the other thing is, did you talk to Dan Baroghi about this? Might not be a bad idea.
Who?
Dan Baroghi.
He's our assessor.
You should use the guy that writes the taxes, so. Okay, coordinate the location, size, installation of Knox boxes with the fire department.
So, Bob, things like that, wouldn't that just, wouldn't that happen through the fire department's review of the, you know, site plan?
It typically would, but.
Building permit.
But what seems to be happening is, the, the language is proposed, I think, is trying to, and the amendments are trying to think of a solution to every probability. Which, I'll be honest, I think my opinion is it's too tight. But if that's the way, you know, we want to go, that's fine.
If you look at number five, I did add the Knox box language in, if you go through the draft bylaw.
There's also some issues here with setbacks that should be in the chart, the table two. Because you're talking about small-scale setbacks. Currently, it's side and yard setbacks are typically fifteen to twenty-five feet, depending on the zone that you're in. Typically, I would, I would recommend that you, you look at the panels similar to a swimming pool, okay? Takes up a certain amount of area. Highly recommend a fence around it because it could be a potentially dangerous situation. And the setbacks should be for the panels themselves, not for the fences or for the access around it. Keep it consistent with what you already have in the books, okay? Sinage, it references signage in a couple of areas. We, we had this issue with Millbury where you have certain sign requirements, but they're all driven by different people. The utility may have their own sign requirements. The electrical inspector may have some through the National Electrical Code. The fire department may have theirs, okay? So, you know, this also references stuff that's in the sign section of the bylaws. And there isn't one for solar or photovoltaic ground mount. So I, that should probably be tightened up a little bit in terms of, you know, what signage is required. I would recommend probably leaving it to the proper authorities for the safety and security of the installation, okay? I mean, I've got no problem putting a sign out on the street saying this is Joe Schmo's electrical plant, but, you know, that, that's about where, you know, the regular sign bylaws kind of, don't go there, okay? Almost done. All solar photovoltaic shall require permission from the property owner. Recommend ground-mounted solar, small scale.
Wait, where are you looking right now?
Agent.
Oh, okay.
I recommended, um, ground-mounted PV systems shall be contained by a fence not lower than four feet. Non-residential ground-mounted PV systems, six feet. And, you know, I, I spoke with Kathy about this, that in many communities, the, the fence, the fence design, how big is the mesh, should it be colored, should it be galvanized, should it be natural steel? Should you have positive fence supports going from post to post on a horizontal basis at the top and at the bottom for the structural rigidity of the fence? Those are minor details to be worked out, but I do know that in Millbury, that was, that was a big deal. They actually had a clearance from the bottom of the fence mesh to the grade. So it's, I mean, that's pretty tight, but it, the fencing is something to be looked at. The thing about the ground-mounted solar, both in residential and for commercial purposes, is that it's a potential safety hazard. And, you know, kids, but anybody out there running on four-wheelers or whatever, you know, that they think, they think they're all cool because, you know, the sliding stuff. I'm not an electrical engineer, but, you know, you want to keep unauthorized persons away from it. Even, even if it is a residential one. Because, you know, in, in the firefighting world, if there's a house fire and the panels are in the way, nobody goes near the panels in a fire. They'll find another way to get into the house, but they won't cover it with a tarp, okay? They're not going to put, you know, they're not going to put extra lights on, you know, all that stuff. Somebody said, when the fire truck show, put the lights on. Well, if you put the lights on, the panels generate electricity. And I said, well, throw a tarp over the panels. I can't think of anything more stupid. You know, so if a house is on fire with panels on it, they're going to go to the other side or the backside. They're going to leave the panels there. That's all I had for the solar.
Okay, so thank you for taking a closer look at this, that was some great feedback. Does the board have any comments or questions related to this feedback from Bob's perspective?
Well, I was thinking of a way of approaching your questions and, about the screen. Well, I was thinking of a way of approaching, um, your questions and, about the screening of it, even at, um, ground mounted, was how we would do it, how we, um, do the screening through design review for the waste removal, um, you know, the dumpsters. You know, we talked about the black mesh fencing around it, you know, um, so that, you know, that's what we require for, um, all trash removal to be, you know, enclosed with either that or a natural buffer, I mean, sometimes both. But that might be, since we use that for the dumpsters, use the same for, um, this situation. I mean, when you were talking about, is it black versus gray, and, you know, it seems black seems to.
Some communities go for like a rubber coated color, okay, some go with a, uh, the slats. Okay, that go down between the, the weave and the, you know, I mean, it's, I, I don't know if you're ever gonna get to the point where you can not see a part of it from the street.
I mean, in, in the, in the current proposal, it, um, references a site impervious fence, you know, of a maximum of six feet. I mean, I don't think anywhere else in our bylaw, do you regulate, like, the color of the fence, or, these wouldn't come through design review.
No, I know that, but all, all I'm recommending is, when we have businesses who come through design review, and they're always looking for, um, how to cover up the, um, dumpsters, we ask for the black, plastic, the black fencing. I mean, it's just something that, doing it, is what we do.
The, um, a, a, a lot of these, um, you know, again, Sarah wasn't able, you know, just time wise, between Thursday and today, and, and we and they were closed yesterday. But, um, the, Sarah said that a lot of, you know, what Bob had pointed out, that, um, you know, she'll incorporate. You know, it's either things that, um, that she didn't catch, or, you know, she worded them differently, and, you know, likes Bob's wording, and, so she's, she's going to incorporate, um, you know, a lot, I don't wanna, all the no brain or stuff, but I mean, I, I think things that you don't have to like individually, you know, that people don't. So, so that, so that will be incorporated into your, into the next draft for next week.
Okay, any other comments or questions on this particular bylaw or feedback?
No, I just, to me, it appears there's just a bunch of kinda house cleaning to do, and if Sarah's gonna handle that, and whatever, we have to identify, whether it's a few items of fencing or whatever, and we should identify and then figure out if there's something we wanna do about it.
Okay, what about the site plan component, is that language we need to add?
The, what's section?
So, site plan approval, Bob pointed out there's no language for it.
Oh, here, that, first page, two thirds of the way down.
Okay, so, D two. Yeah, okay, so we say, subject to site plan, let's see, large scale, ground mounted, solar, okay, so, so. So the intent through the, the graph that Sarah provided, um, does have a large scale going through site plan. So I think that that's, I think that's an easy fix, um, to, to our site plan section, where right now it lists, you know, anything that's, um, you know, multifamily, commercial, industrial, uh, what, and however else it reads, that we would just add in, you know, in large scale, ground mounted.
Okay.
It would be parentheses E, I think.
Okay, okay, any other comments on this?
Um, can you just settle as far as setbacks?
Oh, sure.
What do you wanna do with setbacks? And do you wanna change anything with fencing, I think, those?
Well, it sounds like Bob recommends we have fencing if it's on the ground, no matter where it is, front yard, backyard, side yard.
And whether it's residential or small scale or large scale.
Requires a fence, does the board agree with that?
I can see that.
Yes.
Then that may actually prevent the front yard issue because you may not want a front yard fence, so. Um, and setbacks, it sounded like, overall, the board is okay with these current setbacks that we have, just matching our current setbacks?
I think, for now, yeah, I mean, if it becomes a big problem at some point in the future, we can trust, but I don't think it would be.
Yeah, well, you seem okay with setbacks.
Yep, yep.
So it sounds like our current setbacks, just matching? And any ground installation requires a fence? Does that answer everything you need? Okay, all right, great, so, does this settle everything that we needed to settle for this, to get with next steps with Sarah?
Um, I believe it does.
Okay.
I would just ask with Sarah what her recommendation for fencing would be, right, because you have a lot of different varieties of fencing, and Bob gave us some suggestions, I don't know if any specifics she should, you know, if you wanna just do, you know.
So, so you wanna say something more than what it, um, more than what it says now, as far as a, um, imperv- site impervious fence of a maximum of six feet?
Is that okay with you, Bob, I mean, uh, do you feel like you can explain that to a homeowner, or?
Well, that, that's for a, um, uh, large scale.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, homeowner would be four feet, you know, which is the same as a pool. As I, you argue that the hazard potential is about the same, um, you know, you don't want anybody unauthorized just going in there. You know, in terms of the decorative, for residential and small scale, I don't know, it's, I mean, some, some people may balk on that one, but something's gonna get to you folks to figure out if you wanna do that.
I mean, you know, again, you, you don't, you don't tell people, where our zoning doesn't say, it's not even in the zoning, it's, it would be in the building code, but we don't say, you know, there has to be a white vinyl, or, um, you know, whatever, you know, versus, you know, an older pool that probably has vinyl, I mean, um, uh, you know, chain link fence around it. I mean, you don't, you know, the town doesn't specify what kind of fence you have to have around your pool.
Right, exactly, so as long as we just say it's a four foot fence, it's closed, we're fine with it.
Okay, perfect, thank you, that was really helpful feedback. Please.
I understand, so many two across the drive. Board realizes a thousand square foot is thirty-one point six, a thirty-one point six, if you have a hundred foot frontage, you're taking one thirty a yard with a, if you have it out front.
On the ground.
The neighbors are gonna like that?
Yeah.
And what about movable, some people will put up, some will track the sun, have you, have you, uh, thought about that?
Yeah, we, we went back and forth on size quite a bit.
Setback for a house on twenty-five feet?
Generally, it's thirty feet.
So what's the setback for this, thirty feet?
Yeah.
It would be using the same.
A lot of properties, they could even put in the front yard, because they only have twenty-five foot setbacks.
True, so we were trying to open it up to the, um, for some people, if they wanted to put on the ground, if the roof did not work out for them.
I understand that, I just wanted to point out those numbers to the board.
Yeah, no, thank you, it's.
I mean, think about, I don't wanna pick a neighborhood, think about North Gate.
Yeah.
A lot of neighborhoods too, you'd have five or six houses with these big monsters in the front yard.
That's why some towns do do sign and ramp.
But if you, but if you say that they have to meet the setbacks, that's gonna take care of itself.
Yeah.
They're not gonna be able to go in the front yard in a house in North Gate, can they go in the front yard in a house on Green Street? Probably.
Yep.
But, you know, so I think you, I think it's going to take care of itself.
There's a few installations currently in town that are ground mounted in a residential purpose, and that's generally installed in a fairly expansive backyard.
I just wanted to point out, though, that if, if everybody starts thinking about this, you're gonna have a lot of ugly solar panels and people's front yards.
Do we allow, before you got here, Bob, I had a question, do we allow sheds in the front yard, like, can a shed go anywhere?
The front yard setback is not allowed, okay, the front yard or other side or the rear yard setbacks, they're not allowed, provided they're, well, a hundred twenty square feet for a shed, okay? Um, you have to monitor your setbacks, okay, and adhere to them. If it's smaller than a hundred twenty square feet, uh, in some zones, you can go right up to the line, in other zones, you can go to five feet, okay, with the side and rear setback. We do have a swimming pool in town that met the front yard setback, and it is still in the front yard, before you see the house. Okay, so, you know, that front yard setback of thirty feet, if your house is eighty feet back, that front yard setback is what's protected. Okay, so, you know, I think you folks are trying to build in something about not visible from the street or something like that, that's gonna be a challenge. You know, so if you do have somebody up on Green Street, and, you know, they got a giant front yard, and they put panels on the front, typically, the front thirty feet is the only thing that's really protected.
Should we even have a bigger front yard setback? I mean, not much bigger than thirty, but, I don't know. I am concerned too, that all of a sudden they pop up everywhere in the front yards.
Well, I feel like the fact that they would have to have fencing, and they have a setback, would automatically cut a huge amount of people that would even consider in their, if anybody would consider in their front yard, to then have to put a fence, if their yard is that big that they can accommodate, they then have to make a giant fence. So, at that point, I don't know if we're eliminating.
And they also have to have a solar capable property, that means enough solar and, you know, the town has a lot of trees in it.
Yep.
So.
Okay, I was.
I think you might be surprised if you look in neighborhoods, how few houses qualify for it.
If I may to answer your other question about, um, the solar panels move.
Yeah.
They move in place, so they're, they do this.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
So they don't stand, they just twist?
They, they sit here and they do literally this.
Okay.
Okay, occasionally, and I don't think that would happen here because the azimuth is pretty set, um, occasionally, the pitch or the angle can change, but I haven't seen those systems here. And usually, if they can put an angle on the panel itself, it's at a fixed angle and it stays there. Okay, but you can put a clock drive on these things so that it follows the sun through the day.
Okay, I wanna make sure we get through hazardous as well, uh, did you also have feedback on hazardous?
I'm working on it.
Okay. So.
Before I was looking for solar.
Should Bob have feedback on hazardous? What is the best way to ensure that we can wrap everything up and get Sarah's?
So, with, with the, um, with the, with the draft that we have from Sarah, um, based on your meeting, uh, you know, Thursday's meeting, you know, that's, I can, I can submit that as the placeholder. And then, you know, oh, just within the next meeting, if you have language changes, you know, then that's what we would, we, I could provide that to the town administrator, you know, before the warrant is printed. So that, so that, you know, a, a, a better draft is what, is what's going to be printed. The, Sarah, like I said, Sarah, um, uh, did not incorporate or, um, or have time yet to look at Amy's comments. So you, you have Amy's, um, um, draft in front of you. Um, first you have, you know, again, the, um, the material from Sarah, which is labeled C M R P C, upper right, and then behind that, hopefully in your pile, you have, um, something that starts off in all red, and, um, written very small, I didn't realize it was gonna come out so small, but, um, I, I have, you know, Amy's initials, um, in the, in the upper left corner. So those are, um, I, I think the blue Amy is what your new comments were.
Yeah, that was not for this year, I don't know, it was late Friday night, and I added those, maybe for next year or the year after. I was just looking under these industrial uses that were listed, and it had fuel storage.
So, so you were looking at things, I, I mean, the way I read this, Amy, you were looking at things other than the hazardous materials?
Yeah, but I don't, I didn't know I sent that, so, but mostly look at the red, so, um, I think we talked about the first one, the second one, I asked her about a comma, I think she said she's gonna put that in. So then, three and four, she was gonna look at, and then on the next page, I think she was gonna look at it all and get back, so, I'd probably wanna wait to hear from her. A big thing, though, the question I had was on decommissioning under environmental performance standards, because decommissioning is something we talked about a lot, and then we said, well, maybe we're gonna have one area in the bylaw that points to decommissioning, and then anything, whether it's hazardous, whether it's, we're gonna point to that one area. And I didn't know if Sarah got to the decommissioning part, or anybody got to the decommissioning part, but I think when you're talking about hazardous facilities, decommissioning plays a, a huge factor, and we should definitely have some sort of decommissioning in our bylaw.
I, I had in my notes from, um, Thursday's meeting about the decommissioning, that Sarah had talked about, um, relying on D E P, what D E P is going to, um, permit, and, and they cover decommissioning. And I, I thought, so I apologize if I wrote that down incorrectly, but I thought that, um, that you were going to go with what D E P, since D E P regulates the decommissioning, that that's, that you were gonna go with that, and not have anything extra in, in the bylaw.
Oh, I guess I'd like to read that, then, the D E P commission, uh, decommissioning, and then maybe talk about it next time when Sarah's here, just, uh, I'd like to just see if it makes sure it covers what I would hope it would cover. So our town is properly protected. Because sometimes the state regulations are like the first level, and then the town can add a little extra here and there, you know, the fire department might have something to say, or.
I, I, I think in some cases, has been shown by the Santa Anza cases, that sometimes the state has more teeth than the town does.
Yep.
So, I think it might turn out to be a mixed bag of success.
I guess I'll just read it before our next meeting, the state decommissioning section.
Make a note of it somewhere, and now I can't find it, but.
Would this particular bylaw affect what the trucking companies currently carry, like FedEx and, um, the Cassin, do we file?
Have to ask Sarah, but I don't think so, I think this is citing for hazardous facilities.
This is an actual facility that, that would locate in town, not what's on the train, you know, every day that comes through this town. That we don't wanna know about.
Senator Tom?
Yeah.
You know, Kathy, it almost looks like Amy's comments in red, if I can, look like they have been incorporated here with Sarah's, she just underlined them.
The, um, notes, on Sarah's draft, the, what the underline means is Sarah's following how we do our bylaw changes, which is anything underlined is new language. So on Sarah, this is Sarah's draft based on your comments from Thursday, and this went out Friday, uh, Sarah, Sarah sent it to me on Friday afternoon, and then I think I sent it to you Saturday or Sunday. Um, I forgot what day, uh, that I was in the office, so it was either Saturday or Sunday, and then, but, but Amy's comments came in, um, um, Friday night, so Sarah hasn't looked at.
I think she had it a little bit, because we had talked about it, so if you read the hazardous waste facility, she did have some of it, but then she asked me to send the whole thing.
So, so Sarah's big question for tonight is, you know, do you have anything, do you have any, um, you know, changes that you want her to make, um, for your next meeting, assuming you don't, you know, you're, we're gonna schedule her for the fourth at six o'clock?
So, what, number six, under miscellaneous standards, that is an addition, or that is already there from Sarah? that is an addition or that is already there from Sarah?
That was already there.
Are you on Sarah's or Amy's?
I'm on Amy's. I'm just trying to figure out what was added and what is. So six was already there, seven was added, and eight?
But I added a couple things. See where I highlighted, like, I was following the bylaw to where I crossed out what I was taking out, and I added what I highlighted.
Okay, so, and seven in entirety is added, and eight in entirety is added? So those are brand new.
I can't even remember from who asked me to this, but maybe she, maybe I did do seven and eight and she put it in, did she?
No.
Okay.
Seven and eight aren't in here. I thought we had talked about the peer review that, um, that we, you know, we, we have peer review in your existing bylaw, so you don't need it, you know, again, listed someplace. Because again, this hazardous waste information is not a separate bylaw, like the solar bylaw. This is all language that's being added to various sections. So you already have peer review, you know, you have the ability to require or request peer review.
I guess with seven and eight, I asked Sarah if those were covered by the state. Because Schusper had them, and she was gonna get back and say, oh yeah, those are already covered by the state, so we don't have to put them in there, some of it. I just copied what they had, and I went through all theirs, and these were the two that's kind of stuck out. And, um, I just put them on there and emailed them to Sarah and asked her if she thought it was something.
Okay, so we're trying to find out if we need to add any more language on decommissioning or any more language on peer review. And number eight is related to?
Has to do with conditions, monitoring wells, sampling, and that might all be covered by the state. I didn't have time to read the whole state bylaw. So I added the two that seemed like it would protect our town. And then Sarah was gonna read them and say, oh yeah, those are covered by the state, or no, those aren't covered by the state, maybe you wanna add those.
Okay, so if one is decommissioning covered by DEP?
Mm-hmm.
Is peer review covered elsewhere in our bylaws?
Mm-hmm.
And eight is number eight covered by the state?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, any comments from other board members on any of these edits or additional inquiries?
I do not.
Michelle, any comments?
No?
Nope.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Okay, so we have those three open items, plus if Bob has any additional comments or edits.
Yeah, these are Sarah's. So she'll probably have to fix that. But we should remember to ask her.
Ask her what?
The setback is fifteen hundred.
Michelle's on the last page.
On the last page, yeah, I thought it was. But I think she changed it on this one.
Oh, okay, yeah. It is setback fifteen hundred.
Yeah, because those weren't mine.
That's Amy's.
I don't think I added those, yeah.
What you're looking at. Sarah has fifteen hundred.
Yeah.
In the, uh, in the new bylaw. Um, which is on the last page, under, um, density and dimensional regulations, under yard requirements. So that's where the fifteen hundred comes in.
Okay.
Fred, do you wanna speak to the groundwater?
Yeah, I, um, apologize, I didn't catch it the last time we spoke, um, last week.
This is on the last page of Sarah's.
The, there's one note to the groundwater section of the bylaw, where it says disposal of hazardous waste as defined by the bylaw. Don't think it's necessary. The two statements in that section about what's prohibited says any solid hazardous, any solid waste or any liquid waste. So, it, it really is covered and you don't need to specify that in the definition sections. Once you add it to the definitions, if there's a question, we just go right to the definitions. I would recommend that we not edit the groundwater portion of the bylaw whatsoever. Generally, when, we've talked about perhaps editing that, but there's a, several things that need to be looked at. And one of the major things is a hydro geological study to make sure the lines are accurate and the delineation that we have. So, if it's possible to get what you want done without touching the bylaw, the groundwater portion of the bylaw, that'd be my recommendation. And if it looks like you're just adding that one line that says, see the definition, I think that, I don't think it's necessary.
Okay, any comments or questions from the board on this one?
I think Sarah added that before disposal was in our definition, so that's probably why it's there, unless I'm confused. Because the hazardous waste facility used to say just production or storage, and then she added all the dewatering disposal. I'm just thinking that may have been why it was there. But now, the hazardous waste facility added disposal and all that. So now you're saying we don't need number two?
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
That, I believe, is the only change you had to the groundwater protection overlay district. That's the only part that's underlined?
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
If you're adding the definition of hazardous waste, then I don't think you need to add the statement that says, see the definition.
Is everybody good with taking this out?
Yep.
Yep, okay.
All right, so that no longer is part of this bylaw.
Anything else Friday you had?
I know, that was, that was it.
I'm sorry, I didn't ask you if you had anything for solar. Did you have anything for solar?
I, I did, I defer to Bob. Bob defers to me when it comes to groundwater stuff, so it kinda works out.
All right.
It only took me two minutes and took him four hours.
Um, I do have a question regarding the hazardous material. You talk about hours of operation. Possible extension or exemption if they wanna work outside of the seven to seven or Sundays and holidays. And I think, um, you, as a board, will wanna retain that authority to give that exemption. Usually when they wanna come and work on weekends, it's usually on an emergency basis. And my question is, is it, is it a phone call to the chairman of the planning board? Or is it a vote at a planning board meeting, which has to be posted and there's a delay involved from their emergency type? Or do you wanna leave it as in normal construction practices where I have that call, so to speak? I, I, I'm just throwing that out there.
Okay, so you're noting there is an exemption, but you're just, you're wondering how that actually plays out?
Right.
In reality?
Right.
Okay. Okay.
If you're the, if, if the planning board is the one to grant the authority for an exemption for the construction or the hours of operation, what are the mechanics behind it? Okay, is it something that the chairman of the board can make? I mean, I don't know, or is it something that has to come up with a vote at a board meeting?
Okay, any thoughts on that from the board?
Well, it says it's in the applicant in the town, so it doesn't actually say the board.
No, it says the board.
But, you know, I, I think the reality of, of this, now that Bob's pointed that out, um, is, because it's just, it's human nature. If, if they're, you know, if they decide on a Friday afternoon that, for whatever reason, they have to do something on the weekend, they're gonna do it and then ask for permission late, I mean forgiveness later, you know? Seek, seek forgiveness instead of asking permission. So, um, so I, so I don't, I think it might make more sense that it follows our existing, if you wanna keep something like this in there, that it follows the existing bylaw about hours of operation. That's just a suggestion.
Okay.
I, I don't, I don't know what kind of situation we'd be in about this.
I, I can weigh in a little bit, if you don't mind, Millie, you wanna go first?
Uh, the only thing I can think of is if there are hours of operation, and during the week, one falls on a holiday, then everything gets shifted to another day, you know? So that if they are working on typically Monday through Friday, and Monday's a holiday, they still have to do the same amount of work. So it gets shifted sometimes onto a Saturday.
When the earthwork board issues their permit about construction activities, they spell out the hours of operation in the permit. And a lot of times the applicant will come in, in the spring or in the late spring and say, we wanna capitalize on the summer, can we work longer hours during this period of time for a couple of months? Say from, you know, June, July, and August. Or, and reduce the hours in the wintertime, and it, it's spelled out in the permit. You may wanna leave yourself that flexibility to ask them what they want for hours of operation, make sure that, um, it's appropriate. And then, those Sundays, and I think that Saturday is usually the discussion, whether it's just till noon or if it's noon till three or four or five. And sometimes it has to do with the, um, special circumstance about the construction. You know, they wanna expedite it and work longer hours.
Okay. Uh, comments from the board on, do we wanna just keep the standard?
Is that what the standard is?
Um, for earthwork, that's what we do.
Yeah.
We, they, they, when they come in, because we're just talking about construction, site work mostly, and they wanna get it done as quickly as possible to maximize their profit and minimize the time on site. So, it just comes up as part of the decision every time. It's a, we have standard hours, and then if they need to do something different, they ask for it.
So Bob, what's the standard, um, seven, it's seven to seven?
Monday through Friday, Monday to Saturday, I believe. Um, no Sundays, no holidays. Um, in my two and a half years here, um, I've given one exemption. It was for, um, one of the big warehouses out on Bartlett Street. They were in the middle of pouring the foundation, and they had trucks coming up and lumping up. And I think, was it the fourth of July that fell in the middle of the week?
Yep.
Something?
Yep.
And they asked me if they could work on the fourth of July. And I said, okay. But that was during construction phase, and they were running probably fifty or sixty concrete trucks a day to get the foundation in. And to disrupt that, he said, you know, we'll, we'll give the guys Friday off, or something like that, but they, they had a procedure that they wanted to get it done in one shot. So that's the only time I've given it to them.
Okay, so it sounds like had the planning board been in charge of that, they would have waited to come to the planning board and their whole operation would have been disrupted. So are we comfortable with just leaving it up to Bob to just do the extension exemptions as normally done?
So we're gonna keep this hours of operation on E, but just change who it's granted by?
Yeah, correct.
Yep. Yep.
Now, the, in the bylaw, Saturday is allowed also. It ju, the, the bylaw is seven to seven, except Sunday and legal holidays.
So I think what Kathy's talking about is taking out this whole E and just going by our bylaw.
Yeah.
So what we have to decide, do we put it on Monday through Friday or Monday through Saturday?
Yeah, because if you go with what the existing hours are, then you don't need this section, this E, hours of operation at all. If we go with what is today, which is seven to seven, except Sunday and legal holidays.
I think Sarah added this section, so I think, I don't know, maybe Monday through Friday. But leave Bob in charge.
Yep.
She may not be aware that we already have it.
Right.
Chapter one.
Okay, would it be possible then to clarify from Sarah if she added this for a specific reason? Or if, um, we could just go by our standards?
Because that may help solve that mystery.
Okay, but either way, it's just gonna default to Bob in an emergency or whatever, an exemption type sys, um, situation? Right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, I wanna move on because we, unless anybody has anything pressing on hazardous? Um, we need, we have some hearings. But I think we need to continue. Um, Whit, four twenty-five Whitney Street has already been continued to February fourth. Oh, shoot, seven thirty is for Bartlett, okay. So, for the seven o'clock hearing, that is listed on our agenda as a continued public hearing for four twenty-five Whitney Street. That has been continued by a board vote, a unanimous board vote, to be continued on February fourth. And the applicant agreed to that as well, to continue on February fourth at seven PM. And that will be for the four twenty-five Whitney Street, special permit site plan approval, and special permit per groundwater protection overlay district. Okay. So why don't we, we have until seven thirty for our Bartlett Street hearing, so why don't we just continue on our bylaw? We have a couple other bylaws that we're, um, finalizing before they are due. These two particular bylaws, do we need to do an E? Um, do we need to take a vote to, uh, add, add them to the warrant or anything, or no? Okay. So we have hazardous and solar, the planning board's going forward with. Okay. We last left off, I'm gonna quickly go through, um, what we've already settled on so that we don't have to go in detail unless anyone is wanting to go backwards, we can.
Should we take a vote as we go through it?
Do, you said we don't need to vote to put things on?
I, I mean, if you feel more comfortable taking a vote, but I, I don't, I don't, you know, technically or legally, like, have to have a vote for you in order to put it on the warrant.
Okay.
But I mean, if you all wanna record that, you know, yes, you wanna put a solar bylaw on, and then yes, you wanna put the hazardous waste amendments on.
Do we wanna take a vote, or we can? Do you want, we'll just make it official? Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion to put forth the hazardous materials bylaw for the twenty twenty town meeting?
Make a motion, we put forward the hazardous waste bylaw changes for the twenty twenty town meeting.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor? Okay.
Make a motion, we put forward the solar bylaw for the twenty twenty town meeting.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, all right. So next we had on our list, we had the, we had already talked about the funeral home. We had settled on that at the last meeting. We are essentially.
Should we vote on that too, like, should we?
Yep.
So what, um, just so you know what you have in front of you, um, and then you also may have a copy from Thursday. So what's in front of you again is, Carrie, your, your, um, condensed version of the zoning changes, so everyone's got another copy of that. And then there's a, an email, uh, uh, not an email, um, a, um, two, two pager from Amy about, uh, home occupation. So that's what, um, you have in front of you from me.
Okay.
I just cleaned it up, I thought that's where we left off. So I tried to clean it up and just send it out new, because I thought that was the one we left off on.
Okay, so, um, we had a bylaw that we discussed, and it was a little bit on the housekeeping side in terms of the use table for a funeral home. We switched from, uh, to RC is now a no. GR is a no. MSR is by permit, and downtown neighborhood is a no. Does everyone reflect the same changes? I just wanna make sure I'm looking at the right thing.
Yeah, the, I mean, there's, there's no difference between Thursdays and today's.
Okay, great.
I just printed it again.
Okay. Yep, so that should be, that's how we left it, are there? Yep.
What I think we have to do, because I didn't update this, is see the two little stars and says, do we take out of RC and GR? Those are my questions, so that part at the bottom has to come off. Like, that shouldn't go to town meeting like that. You see how we have the top part? See where it says, do we take out of?
Oh, yeah, no, it'll, I mean, I'll.
Yeah, clean it up.
I'll write it, yeah, so that.
Yeah. Okay, I just wanna make sure.
That'd be entertaining to have.
Yeah. That would mess with them.
So, so, um, so yes to funeral homes. I mean, to changing funeral homes.
Yep, okay, does anyone wanna make a motion to move forward with the changes to funeral homes?
I'll make a motion, we, um, add funeral homes to the town twenty, town warrant twenty twenty.
Second.
A second.
Further discussion? All in favor? Okay, next, we had already discussed the, um, updated the definition of kennels. So where we last left this, we had decided we would go with the state definition of kennels.
It's not on this abbreviated one, but.
Oh, yeah. So on the, the, we've, excuse me, we looked at the, um, state definition of a kennel, added dog walking on premise. We also added including no more, wait a minute, I keep messing this up, I'm not gonna do it this time. It includes more than three. It includes more than three dogs.
Right, after, after the absence of the owner of any such animal, it's in the middle of the, it's not on the Carrie page, it's on Amy's old document. But, so last week you, so after the, the absence of the owner of any such animal, that includes more than three dogs.
Correct.
Provided, however, that commercial boarding or training kennel, blah, blah, blah.
Correct.
But I think at the top, we, instead of using commercial dog kennel and commercial dog service, were we going to keep it just as kennel? Because that's where we have it in now, in our use table?
Yes, actually, I think, um.
So that would just be kennel. And I think as we go down further, when it says commercial boarding or training kennel, we'll have to change that to kennel also, just so it matches.
Yep, so instead of commercial boarding and training kennel, it'll just say kennel in, in quotation marks because that will just mirror what's in the statement. Yep.
So it will fit with our use table and we don't have to change the use table?
Right, so it's, um, okay, so it's going, so we're going to keep commercial?
No, I think we're just going to have kennel.
Just kennel.
We're going to have kennel and then start with an establishment on the second line. So I think the whole top line is crossed out. And it's going to be kennel, an establishment used for boarding, holding, daycare.
Okay, I didn't have that much from last. All right, and so, so you're getting rid of commercial boarding or training?
Yes, I'm just calling it kennel.
We're just calling it a kennel, yeah.
So it starts off with an establishment.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and we had for that is now not allowed in R.A., but it is now allowed in industrial. And all other uses stay the same. I'm sorry, all, all other districts stay the same.
I've got a couple of questions about the kennels, if I might.
Sure.
Um, in the definition, you talk about veterinary clinic and then you want to add slash veterinary kennel.
Oh, no, I don't think we're adding that. No, we, I don't think we talk, we're adding veterinary, wait, did we add anything about veterinary kennel? I, I think we decided not to.
We're only adding number four, but he might not have the right one. I have the definition we decided on.
You know, I'm, I'm, even with all this condensing, I'm, I'm working off of three pages. So, so it's, so Bob might not have the most recent. But there was a question, you had, um, you had something, Amy, at some point I had read, oh, veterinary kennel.
Right.
And that, that the dog, that the animal control officer and the health agent both asked what that was. But we're not doing that.
Yeah, I think we changed it just to go by the state definition.
Yes.
One of the other questions I had was, and I don't know if you're keeping this language, what is an other domestic non-farm animal?
Gonzo, not in there.
Okay, because I'm thinking, is it cats, chinchillas?
None of us knew, so it's.
No.
And you know what?
It wasn't the original.
We, we found out that it's in our bylaw, in our bylaw today. Yeah.
So whatever they may be, off they go.
We'll find out now.
I have a question, Bob.
So where, so we are taking. We are taking that out, the non-domestic, no, domestic.
Yeah, that's, correct, yep.
Yeah, this is the state definition.
Right, no, I have that.
Okay.
I have that. But then they, but in our existing bylaw, we have domestic non-farm animals and that's coming out?
The whole thing is cross, I think it probably makes sense to cross out the entire definition.
And replace it with?
Replace it. Yep, and then, um, just to reiterate, we did not opt to add vet, um, veterinary kennel to clinic. That's just not, that's not part of this.
So we're not changing that.
Did you want to make reference to, one is a dog, a dog, um, in, in some laws? Because puppies may be involved, um, in some jurisdictions, a dog isn't a dog until he's six months old. Okay, so if you've got puppies younger than six months or whatever, they don't count.
I think there's a qualifier on that. It's just the same three months.
Isn't there something in our existing bylaw about breeding?
I don't think we have anything about breeding in our bylaw. But if you want to use the state definition, number five defines breeding. But then we have to add it to our table, so is that just getting more confusing?
At this point, I, I mean, whatever you guys want to do, whatever the board wants to do, excuse me, but I didn't ask, um, the, um, the animal control officer or the health agent yet. I didn't ask them about puppies and.
I mean, to some extent, I assume they own the puppies until they sell them. So it would be their own personal dogs in a way, right? So maybe we're covered for now.
But then some people take in dogs and they.
Well, that's exempt, right? It doesn't include, I think Millie brought that up last time.
That was holding.
We wondered what holding was. Oh, no, that's holding.
Oh, that's right. Oh, no, that was a fostering or something.
Yeah.
I mean, we could take the part out of the, if we're going to say, I forget what we said, no more than three dogs, three months or older is what they use in the other.
Yeah.
We can just add three months or older and that leaves the puppies alone.
I have a quick question for you. I think we only have a veterinary clinic in town, right?
Um, I believe, no. Well, we have VCA.
Yeah.
And then we have next to it in the strip mall, um, it's like a dog rehab center.
Yeah.
Hydrotherapy for dogs and things like that. Um, so I don't know if it's a, if she, if she's a veterinarian or if she's.
She's not.
A practitioner of this particular care, I, I don't know.
There's another hydrotherapy on, on West Main, further up on West Main Street.
Yeah.
Um, near the tire place.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah?
Firestone or, is it Firestone? It used to be Firestone.
Goodyear?
Goodyear.
Yeah, whatever, yeah. The, the round black things have gone tires.
So my question is, I, I don't have a dog, so I'm not familiar with it. Maybe there's dog people on the board. But when you bring it to the veterinary clinic, is there anywhere outside that he would use the back outside of the building at all, like a little fenced in area? Do you know if he does that?
Um, usually there's a, a spot somewhere on the veterinarian's property for the dog to do their business, either before they go in or when they come out. Because they're nervous, you know, they need to believe themselves. I don't know if they need a space to run, to assess their mobility. I don't know, I would almost think a space to run an animal would be with the person next door in the strip mall. But she's got a space within the building. Gymnasium for the dogs.
Yeah, so the reason I asked was, on this one, it says that it's to, all the work that's supposed to be done is in the fully enclosed building.
Right.
So I didn't know if a veterinary clinic has a small fenced in backyard where he may take the dogs outside to either run around or go do something or evaluate. I didn't know if that clinic or if most veterinaries have something or they don't.
I don't think they do.
They don't?
They usually don't. I used to work into that.
Okay. So that answers that question?
I'm kind of aware of it, I mean, I've had dogs almost all my life. I can't remember a veterinarian that has a pendant area where they can go out and run around. You know, generally they want the owner's control on the leash until you get into the building.
Okay.
Okay, so, so that we don't add too much to this, how about we just say, that includes more than three dogs, comma, three months or older. So that way, we don't have to worry about puppies. We get in, we've changed the definition to the state definition. We have the same number as the state, we have the same age requirements as the state. Does that sound?
Yep.
Like it could work and cover all of our problems? Okay. Kathy, do you have what that looks like? Okay, and Bob, does that answer your question as well? Any other comments from the board on this one?
No.
Okay. Okay, so are we prepared to send this one along to motion to?
Yep, I'll make a motion, we add to the town meeting 2020, changing the definition of kennel to use the state definition of kennel. More than three dogs, three months or older. And we also change the use table, taking the kennel out of residential A and adding it into industrial.
Okay, second.
And keep, keeping it as the special permit in Business West?
I think so, we haven't had a problem.
We talked about that last time.
Oh, yeah, we didn't change that, nope. The only change in other business uses is in opening up industrial to kennels. Okay, so was there a second on that?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Okay. All right, next, we had allowing gyms and facilities like teamwork and fore kicks in industrial warehouses. So that was a simple changing from, uh, currently it's by permit. It's changing that to yes for a commercial recreation indoors in industrial.
I guess it was a no, so we're.
Oh, it was a no? I'm sorry, wait, but now we're changing to a straight up yes?
Yeah.
Okay, so it was a no, we talked about changing to a permit and then we figured it didn't really make sense to even go through the permitting process. So just make that a yes by right use. So if there's no other comments on that, would someone like to make a motion to put forward that bylaw?
I make a motion, we add commercial recreation indoor, we allow it by right in industrial on the twenty-two, twenty, twenty twenty warrant.
Okay, second?
A second.
Further discussion? All in favor? Okay. Okay, next, we had, okay, this one we had, we, the last few, we still had to talk, talk through a little bit. So, uh, well, just to remind everybody, we took us, we deferred commercial greenhouses, we deferred warehouses in commercial, so those are no longer on the table. The, so this one is the, uh, industrial uses, changing from by right to special permit. We talked about, at the end of our conversation, we had light manufacturing to a special permit. We talked about R and D, keeping as a yes. We talked about warehouse switching to special permit, trucking, rail, freight facility or parcel distribution special permit, contractor's yard special permit. And we went back and forth on accessory uses and just decided that, to keep that as a yes based on really not having a reason. Um, the reasons that we talked about last time was, um, in thinking about this zone in general, you know, in the, in, as an interim solution, how do we, you know, as we develop clearer bylaws for that area, how do we ensure that for places like a Northborough Crossing area, which is currently industrial, you know, now we have quite a bit of uses assigned there, including now solar and hazardous waste, um, do we want to make sure that's a special permit process while we work out what's going on in that, in those zones for us? So are there any further thoughts on this section or discussion from the board?
No.
Any from staff?
So would, would the idea be to change it from industrial to something else with special, with, with an overlay district or anything like that? Or is it, is that what we talked about is modifying how we?
Are you talking about Northborough Crossing area?
Yeah, in general.
Well, I think in the past, we've talked about that area as potentially a commercial.
Right, I think it's just, um, this is just a holding pattern while we work on the industrial bylaw for next year. Because we were talking, it was just too much of a bylaw to address and talk about some of the concerns with the different industrial zones and that it might be better off, we had talked even from the master plan, where it was, might be worthwhile making, where the shop's way is commercial. And because we don't have time, we haven't looked into it, that this would be a holding pattern.
Okay, that's my thought.
Just at least come with a foreboard that can, um, review and board's approval for it.
Um, anything from you, Bob? No, okay. Okay, so additionally, we had talked about the definition for light manufacturing. So crossing out that section in, in pink highlight, they, and further provided, that is no longer on the table, that all accessory operations and storage, et cetera. Though, we left it as thinking about, do we separate out that second part into its own sentence? Or do we leave it as is? Are there any thoughts on this since we last met? Do we want to keep it as is? Do we want to separate them?
In that pink section below, all accessory operations and storage of materials?
We could delete, we removed, we decided that Fred pointed out, that didn't make a lot of sense for this use. So we crossed that out. So basically, what we're just looking at now is where the semicolon is, is just making it clear that they're two separate components.
So how would it read now? It says, or noise, semicolon, and further provided?
And further provided that all operations are located entirely within the enclosed building. So it would just be two separate statements instead of a semicolon.
Okay, yep, and just cross out.
I think it just helps clarify, but if the board doesn't think it's a issue or doesn't want to pursue it, that's, if I'm outnumbered, that's okay.
So you're saying put a period after noise?
Yes.
Yeah, that makes sense to me.
And then the second part will just read, so there's no actual, um, the words are not changing. It's just, it's just clarifying they're two separate statements.
So you put a period behind noise and then would you start the next sentence with?
Further provided.
So period, then further provided, comma?
Yes.
That all accessory operations are.
No, 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 that's gone. So that bottom part, this, so there's three lines in pink, the second two lines are now gone. But because it didn't make sense to that use, remember?
So what do you have the further provided for?
So further provided, all operations are located entirely, so all it's doing is separating the statements into two pieces.
Okay, yeah, yeah, got it.
Yep.
So further provided, all operations are located entirely within an enclosed building.
Yes.
Got it.
Makes sense to me.
All right, so can I just repeat?
Yes.
You're going to put a, a period after noise in the existing definition. And then the new sentence will read, further provided, all operations are located entirely within an enclosed building.
Period.
Yeah.
And the rest of it is just gone. Does that make sense to board members to do? Not necessary?
Sorry.
Yes.
I think I had this backwards. So, can you just explain to me again? So we're keeping that the operations are in, in light, located entirely within the enclosed building? Or is that take, being taken out?
That's in, that stays in.
Okay. Which implies that you can have no operation outside of the building.
Correct. It's a separate condition.
Right, you, you can store materials and so forth outside.
Okay.
But, but the physical operation of whatever it is has to be inside the building.
Okay.
Which is how it reads today.
Okay.
But this is just clarifying grandma, I think, basically.
Yep.
Okay, I'm good.
Okay.
Yep.
Michelle, any comments?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, so is there a motion to move forward with this bylaw on the town warrant for 2020?
I make a motion, we move forward with the edits on the industrial uses with the table that you described. Light manufacturing will be by permit, research and development, yes. Warehouse permit, trucking permit, contractor's yard permit, accessory uses still yes. And also changing the definition as we just discussed. And add this to the 2020 warrant.
Second?
A second.
Further discussion? All in favor? Okay. All right, so this is the home occupation bylaw. This has, Amy consolidated this a little bit. So, oh, no, it's not consolidated.
Oh, I didn't take off the top part with the description, if somebody wanted to read it, but I did consolidate a lot of the bottom. So it's the letter that says AP on it.
Yep.
What I changed is, Michelle had mentioned for number two under the conditions that just leave it at twenty-five percent of the existing gross floor area, and it was or four hundred square feet, whichever's smaller, but I took that out. So, right now, none of the zoning table would change, none of that, it's still home professional office by right in all of residential, home personal service is staying the same. I just wanted to update the intent, home occupation, an occupation conducted as an accessory use in an owner occupied detached, single-family dwelling or detached accessory structure by the resident owner or members of the owner's family, is staying the same. And then I just made it clear, because this is what the state talks about, the home occupation shall be clearly incidental and secondary to the use of the dwelling as a residence, shall be located wholly within the building unit, or a single accessory building, and shall not change the residential character with, thereof. So I think part of that's already there, and I just.
Amy, where, where is the, where, where is this?
Where's what?
Where you're adding this to number six.
Do, do you have the AP?
Are you talk, yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay.
So in the zoning bylaw, are you adding a new section, or you're adding it to the, to the definition of home occupation?
Yeah, I just added a sentence.
On page thirty.
To the definition. See, home occupation was one sentence. I added the second sentence, the home occupation shall be clearly incidental and secondary to the use of the dwelling as a residence, which is supposed to be anyways, shall be located wholly within the dwelling, or a single accessory building, and shall not change the residential character thereof. So I added that sentence. And then on the second page, when you get down to B, there's conditions that we have to meet. Condition number one, I just took out except by special permit. Condition number two, I took out except by special permit. And condition number three, I changed it to one unlit sign of not more than two square feet. Right now, we allow two square feet sign, but it can be lit up. I, I guess I want to ask the board, do you think it's a, a problem to have an illuminated sign in a residential neighborhood? Because we've had problems with signs lit up. So I just changed that, since it's in a residential neighborhood, there can be one unlit sign versus one illuminated sign.
And do you mean internally lit, or, or can someone have a spotlight on it?
I don't know, I guess as a board, we can discuss that. What do you guys think? I would think it would have a light on it, like it would be, what do they call that? Not internally lit, most people probably wouldn't do that in their yard anyways, that would probably take a lot.
It has a spot?
Is it called a backlit? What's the one with the light on it that's not internally lit?
It's like a spotlight.
Externally lit.
Internally lit.
Spotlight, yeah.
But we're not lighting it up anyway, so it doesn't matter. Says one unlit sign.
Well, that, that's, I'm just clarifying that, is that, do you want no lights on the sign internally or externally? Or do you want, is an external light okay? That's all I'm asking.
Just a question for clarity. Go to the sign bylaws.
The sign bylaw on residential calls for you can have one lit sign in, I guess I'm gonna go there, I had it attached.
Turn to page.
What page?
Page one oh two. Parenthesis three, in a residential district, no illuminated signs shall be permitted, except when associated with an allowed non-residential use.
Right, which would I, that's what I think this is, an allowed non-residential use in a residential.
Or lawfully pre-existing non-conforming business.
Yeah, so I thought, instead of changing the sign by law, which is a whole nother change, just make it under a condition. Because I thought it was too big to go in and start changing the sign by law this year. We have so much on our plate.
Okay.
So, and then at number seven, I just added, no use of stored hazardous materials. Number eight, talks about commercial motor vehicles. Because there has to be a line drawn between a contractor's yard and a home business. And I thought by setting a standard for how many cars and trucks you can have, just helps going forward.
And there is no limit in a residential house for the number of vehicles that are registered to be stored on site.
Yep, but this is a home occupation.
Home occupation.
And that's one thing I was asking you about today, if you go to seven forty-two, there's a number six, it's a footnote, and it's attached to carport.
Yep.
And it talks about three motor vehicles, one additional, and then up to a maximum of five motor vehicles. So I didn't know, did that, is that for all home lots? Like, right now, you just said, there's no limit to registered cars and trucks, but then I read that footnote, and to me, it sounds like a maximum of five motor vehicles per lot. I, that's what I was confused about, what that footnote means.
Garage space, garage space for five vehicles, okay? You're allowed by right to have three, three, space for three cars in a garage. And I'm not gonna say three bays, because it doesn't talk about how many doors or how many bays you have. It's space allowed that can hold a vehicle, okay? You take that dimension from the parking regulations, which is nine by eighteen feet, okay? That's one car, so I take the square footage of the proposed garage, divide it by nine by eighteen, that's how many vehicles that are in there. They're allowed three. If they want more than that, they need to add four thousand square feet above twenty thousand to get it. Now, when they talk about a maximum of five motor vehicles in the garage, you can have five in the garage, and you can have six in the driveway, as long as they're registered.
What about where it says not, what about where it says not more than one commercial vehicle shall be stored on such lot? That's not saying in the garage, it says on the lot.
On the lot.
So you can only have one commercial vehicle per site?
Yeah.
On a lot?
Yeah.
So if you had a home occupation, does that also mean you can only have one commercial vehicle on the lot?
Yeah.
Okay.
You just increased it to two.
I just increased it to, but I'm wondering, because nobody knew that, like, I never read that before, that little footnote, so I never knew. So if we were gonna keep out number eight, I would like to put that little six footnote next to home occupation. Because I could see it coming forward where someone says, well, that footnote goes with carport, it doesn't go with home occupation.
We, we all know, Amy, where that, we use that footnote all the time. I mean, you don't enforce the zoning bylaw.
Oh, I know, but I just want to make it clear.
So, it's never not been clear to us about a commercial vehicle.
Write all of number eight?
I didn't write it myself, I took it out of the bylaw, yeah.
Out of A bylaw?
Yeah.
Okay, so you want to remove all of eight, but what if somebody has some heavy equipment?
Right, so I, no, that's what I'm asking, do we add the footnote, or just leave this here? I think by leaving eight here, it's clear.
So I have a problem with eight.
Okay.
I have a problem with how much you're impacting self-employed people in this, because it's way too restrictive, Amy, in a lot of this. So when I look at this, when I looked at number eight, I thought about, what if someone drives for snow plowing for a living? And they leave their snowplow part, that's part of a heavy construction apparatus. What if someone has a backhoe, right? That's, that's part of that, where, what if somebody has ample space, but it's not a paved driveway, but this says you need to have a paved driveway? I don't want to make sure that we have to go around and say, because you have an extra vehicle, it's gotta be on a paved driveway. Like, it's, might be cost prohibitive for that homeowner, or that self-employed person to do that. Other people, my biggest problem with this is where you say that the home occupation has to be, or whatever, that you don't allow the outside. And I, and I, that was my biggest concern from the very beginning, because I think there are occupations that use their outside. So for example, I was starting to think, like, what if you're an electrician, or a plumber, or any one of those, and a lot of those guys use their house, and they don't store all the stuff inside, or a painter, what if they store some of their stuff outside? Right, then it starts to get, how are you going to be able to manage all that? That gets complicated. So I think the more restrictive you come with this, it becomes more difficult for you to regulate, or, you know, one neighbor might lock, lock what someone else is doing, right, a painter or something. I don't like all those ladders out there, but that's his livelihood, he takes the ladders off and he puts them out in his yard, right? So that's part of using his yard to store stuff.
But that's a residential, not a commercial, like, there has to be a cutoff when a residential home occupation becomes a contractor's yard.
I don't think it's a contractor's yard, I think your defining contractor's yard is so different. If a guy is a painter, and he goes out and paints, and he brings his truck home, and he takes some of his tools through his backyard, that's a self-employed guy, I'm not gonna ask him to go rent space to go do that. If an electrician is gonna go out and store his stuff in his shed, or do stuff like that, I'm not gonna ask him to go rent space to do that. I think there's a point at where you're taking these one-person businesses, and now not allowing to use their land or their home to do part of the business.
Well, it says detached dwelling, like, if you are a contractor and you have a lot of equipment, you're not gonna leave it in your front yard, you're gonna put it in a barn, or you're gonna, you're not, because someone would steal it at night, like, I don't think it's gonna impact, we had a contractor in our neighborhood, and he started to get a lot of trucks, and, and then he got a rental space. And nobody asked him to do it, it's just, you get to the point where you're too big, you move to rental space. I'm not trying to say they can't have a home occupation.
But what if somebody then starts to use, what if they actually grow things in their yard? Like, somebody grows, I don't know, a vegetable, and then takes it inside and makes something from it? Like, that's not, am, am I right?
I don't think agriculture is.
I think what we're saying is, when we're using whole.
If you go to a home caterer, which is a legitimate home business, and they grow their own vegetables, you're using the outside of the building for that business, for the home occupation.
Yeah, but that's agriculture, aren't you allowed to do agriculture?
It's not.
And then we already talked, I know it might sound silly, but there is the bees, people who do bees and then sell honey, right, or whatever. I, from the very beginning when this was written, I know why you guys, you wanted to change it, because of one applicant who came before us, who wanted to use it as a dog park. So I think it's like a knee-jerk reaction, and I'm concerned about the cause and effect of this. What, what effect will it have on small business owners that we don't know about, who may use the outside of their parks? That's what I'm concerned about. I was part of, like, the major rezoning, and I know when we originally thought, okay, you're gonna have maybe accountants or lawyers or whatever, but the world has changed since then, and a lot of people are going back to using more of the environment that they live in, which is the whole property. And I know that Indian Meadows, you know, your lots are smaller over there than someone who's up on Green Street, or much larger lot that has five acres. And I know the street that was on Rice, it's unusual to find something over there that had five or six acres. So that was an unusual thing, which is where Kathy advised us, if you don't want to see this in home occupation, put it down. I'm, meaning the dog walking. My concern is, this is gonna have an impact on people. And I wouldn't want someone to impact someone's livelihood, because it's so restrictive. And, and then when I looked on the back page and I saw all of this detail, I thought this is pretty restrictive for some of the guys in the trades business.
Okay, I just want to ask for any comments on this side?
So, I want to go back to the, to the vehicles, the commercial type vehicles with the heavy. Did I hear that there's, you only are allowed one, no matter what, now?
A commercial vehicle.
In residential.
Yeah.
So that doesn't seem to be an issue, right? If we just leave it the way that is, then, then it's even more restrictive than what?
Yeah, it doesn't need to be in this.
Right.
I almost think I should write it in, though, because I think it comes down to it, and no one sees that.
And then, so, and I guess the next thing we're discussing is about wholly within, if I got that correct. I, I think, I'm guessing that the concern here is that it's more about the scope of a home business. And if we were to instead limit, and I don't know what, do, is there a limit on non-resident employees?
Yeah, one.
There's currently a limit of one. One, okay. Currently, with, I believe it's a special permit, you can add more than one non-residential employee. Okay.
So thi- this proposal is to get rid of the special permit that would allow
Right.
potentially more than one employee.
Okay, okay.
Do you have any thoughts on that, or?
I, no, I, so, I think if, if, if the intent is to limit the scope, and to take away the special permit, if we wanted to just make sure that wasn't gonna happen, I would, I think that's reasonable. I think if the truck, if the heavy equipment, I mean, I'm not a hundred percent clear what Kathy's saying about, you know, if you're taking your ladders off your truck and everything, but you know, I don't want to limit or harm anybody who's self-employed, but I also don't want what could turn into a contractor's yard in the wrong place, I mean, there's.
I was looking for apparatus, like a snowplow is a full of apparatus, someone attaches to their truck. So, you know, we don't, that's why we don't have this now, it's just one commercial vehicle.
Right.
It doesn't talk about whether you have, you know, you take, like, your plow off during the non-plowing season, or if you take some ladders off and you store them in the backyard, it doesn't talk about the apparatus.
What if we just take out A, B, C, D, E, and write, no more than one commercial motor vehicle, including trailers, may be parked in the driveway?
Well, if you said that's including trailers, it'd be the vehicle or the trailer.
Right.
Yeah.
And then nothing on the trailer.
So just say, no more than one commercial motor vehicle may be parked in the driveway.
So I think for me, if I'm to think of, you know, trying to understand the different consequences, and maybe some unintended consequences, I think overall, the original point was, we saw an application come forward that was so, that deviated so wildly from what we imagined home occupation to be, and I know you mentioned, like, that knee-jerk reaction. So I don't want to have a knee-jerk reaction to one application, but I would like us to figure out a way where we don't have it that's so broad, that you could actually come up with that kind of application, that's so, that deviates so wildly from what we intended, that residents have to come in, that it takes a lot of staff time to go through, that it takes a lot of applicant time and money to go through, like, that was probably a lot of money and a lot of effort to go through that.
Yeah.
And if our bylaws made that so that it could be reasonably presented, how do we make it so that we don't have that exposure, but we also don't stop people from having their small business? I guess, is there a happy medium that we could come up with? That, is it a matter of the special permits that let that spiral, or?
Well, I don't know if you want to list, like Bob was saying, a home caterer would use, could use things from their garden, so I don't know if you want to list the things that we now know. And someone may come forward and say, by the way, did you know about this other occupation that does? I think the applicant who came before us was looking for many employ, how many employees were they gonna have?
Eight.
Eight employees, right? So, again, on a home caterer, you know, she may use more than, I don't know. I could see someone who might, who had something like that, might use more than one, but I don't think they'd use upwards of eight.
They usually wouldn't have it on site at their house, they may have one other person helping them
Right.
Food and loading, unloading, but they would normally have a kitchen that would be able to accommodate eight.
Because to get that project where that guy had submitted it, I mean, to the scale that he wanted to have it, he would have had eight employees. So is it something for consideration for the board to say, instead of one, two employees, and then remove the special permit?
Yeah.
Do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Because then you're saying, well, two is a little bit more than one, right? It's like another one, most likely you might not have two, but if you needed an extra helping hand, you could. But it's not as restrictive, but the other person wanted eight, so you knew that was a larger-scale project.
Yep. Makes sense, up to two.
I mean, in terms of, so to the point about if someone were to So to the point about if someone were to grow things outside or do things outside like that, I mean, I think overall, the intent is to make it so your neighbor would not even know that you're running this business. So how do we stay true to that intent without respecting someone in those situations from running their business? Is there something we could come up with there?
Well, I mean, we have this home occupation definition for the past ten years and never had a problem with it until we had this one applicant. And, you know, rather than changing the whole definition and limiting it, why not try to take a look at how the applicant wanted to do a larger scale and reduce that capability? In other words, no more than two employees and you can't get a building, you can't get a permit from a board for it.
Yeah.
What about the second one, too, where it's, has another except by special permit, but not more than twenty-five percent of the existing gross floor area? What do you think of that, or?
Right now, the bylaw reads that not more than twenty-five percent of the existing gross floor area of the dwelling shall be devoted to the home occupation, including any stock and trade commodities or products associated with said use, except by special permit.
So you're, you're asking, would you say not more and put a number in for the acreage outside, right? Are you saying for outside? Because if someone would use outside, you'd wanna limit that?
I guess so, I mean, just, I guess I was just thinking of the special permits because that's what I found on other towns, that it was not more than twenty-five percent of the existing floor area. Because I guess that's what allows it to grow, if you have unlimited employees and unlimited space. But I don't know, I don't think you can, with the outside, I don't think you can do by acres. Like, it just gets too confusing.
This is like a rage, a major rewrite of this bylaw, at least in my eyes it is. And I don't know how the other board members feel, but what if we were to make some changes to it this year and then get the feedback from the public or at town meeting, and then move forward with more changes next year? You know, so you're sort of putting it out there because we're, we're going at this a little bit blinded because we don't know what's out there in the public. I mean, Bob, you know the best because you, you work directly with them and you guys as well. So I just foresee that you might have an issue with not being able to use the land. It's the first time seeing it here. My reaction in the beginning was, I didn't think this would do well at town meeting. But maybe we do some of the others where you start to limit, um, for example, the number of employees or, um, the permitting stuff, and then see where you go with that. And then you start to get feedback at town meeting and, or ahead of time. And then if people say, oh, you know, like, what you're thinking, Amy, they'd rather everything stay inside and you wouldn't have an issue at town meeting, or if you have another part of your public population that says absolutely not, you have to include, um, the ability to do outside, then you know you keep it in your bylaw.
Okay, so how does the board feel about something like that? Just kinda take care of it so that it can't be scaled?
If we took out wholly, would you mind if we kept the home occupation shall be clearly incidental and secondary to the use of a dwelling of a residence? Because that's what it's supposed, you know? It even says that at the beginning of the accessory use. But I feel like even with the last one, no one goes back to the beginning where you read about accessory use. And, um, I just think having the sentence, if we take out wholly, the home occupation shall be clearly incidental and secondary to the use of the dwelling as a residence, then it doesn't turn into a commercial business. It already says it, but I just wanted to make it clearer.
Well, Bob, you do the zoning interpretation, is that something that...
Most people that do a home business or a family wanna use their yard in one way or another. Since the dog-walking thing really to let a lot of that stuff go just by right. I will say that, you know, the one-person non-employee, I think is okay. I'm just basing that on issues that I've come across and heard. Two commercial vehicles might be okay. Because if you've got somebody who's like a landscaper, who's got a pickup truck and a trailer.
Yeah.
You know, or if you've got one guy with a backhoe who parks it, or a cross-country trucker that comes home and is home for a week and out on the road for a week. He's put the tractor someplace.
Yeah.
You know, I'm okay with that. Getting into all the other types of vehicle weights and stuff like that, I don't think I'd, I don't think I'd wanna go there. The sign is okay. The twenty-five percent, you know, if you've got a four thousand square foot house, that's a mighty big space for the home business. Okay, um, that's actually, um, that twenty-five percent kind of echoes the accessory dwelling unit requirement we have in town, which is twenty-five percent. Or seven hundred square feet, whichever is larger. This one goes the other way. But I think you crossed it out because it's not gonna be in there.
So you're saying you would leave it crossed out and just leave it with twenty-five percent?
Keep the twenty-five percent.
Yeah.
Four hundred square feet, get rid of that. It's less math for me to do, to be honest with you. In terms of, um, you know, the outside use, um, not just the, not the labor, but not just the caterer growing her own vegetables, but, you know, antique dealers and things like that, if they have a la- larger piece they wanna sell.
Yeah.
Can they put a old stowed fountain out in their yard for a day or two to tell it sells? You know? Which, it's, it's a question, you know? You know, I've got other things like, you know, if you've got a daycare in a home, as a home business, you get kids playing outside. Okay, so you're using the exterior of the, of the property, you know? You can't keep the kids cooped up inside all day.
I think that's a sound state.
They could be, they could be, I'll have to look it up. But nursery plants, gardeners, kennels, not the kennels, florists. Or teaching of painting outside, if you have art classes, you know, one or two at a time at the house, you wanna take them outside to go painting in plain air. You know, it's, it's stuff like that. I think it's a matter of degree, to be honest with you. When the gentleman came in on Rice Ave, I told him from the start, I says, you're asking for a lot, and this is gonna be historic if you get it. And that was my direct quote to him. So, again, I think it's a matter of degree and, you know, I think, I think you might've had a good point where, you know, you try a little bit, see how it goes. And if it creates a problem or an issue, or if I get a lot of feedback in the next year, you can back and revisit it. But there's, there's a, there's a fair amount of stuff in here that's fairly stiff. You know, and, and to be honest with you, I don't know, I don't know if I'd have time to enforce it.
Yeah.
So the part that is stiff is the, related to the vehicles, the...
Yeah, uh, number eight as it is, okay? But, uh, A, B, C, D...
Why don't we cut those out and just leave number eight, without the A, B, C, D, E?
Yeah, yeah.
And, and take out the including trailers? Because that's a concern, that you have to have either one or the other?
Well, it's, if you go to...
You have a trailer, you need a, yeah, you need a truck?
Technically, if you've got a trailer, there's a plate on it, and it's a, technically, from the state, it's a vehicle.
Yeah.
But then again, we have, just to decide, we have a bylaw about, you know, recreational, one trailer or motorhome. Well, you got a lot of people in town that have a snowmobile, trailer, a boat, and a camper. And, and, you know, I, to be honest with you, I don't, I don't enforce any of that stuff.
So, so do you even need eight at all? I mean, it seems like people are agreeing to get rid of eight through E, but do you even, even need eight at all when we already control in the bylaw that you can only have one commercial vehicle?
I think taking the two is, is not, is not too bad a thing.
So I think if you leave eight in...
So do we just wanna change the existing footnote? I mean, we already have existing language. So instead of adding new language, we could just change the existing language?
Might be easier.
I think I'd like to leave eight there because then, I don't know, when, when I went through and looked at home occupation, I never thought to go look at all the footnotes and find footnote six. I just think having eight there, even though it's redundant, it just calls it to the attention. And I also think, um, I lost my train of thought. But I think just having eight there without A, B, C, D, E. Yeah.
I do think that Amy makes a point, like, if you're in a neighborhood setting where the lots are much smaller, if someone is concerned about two commercial, um, you know, vehicles, you could say, okay, well, you have a truck and then you have a trailer. Those are really defined as two separate vehicles in Massachusetts, right? So I would take out, um, the whole trailer thing, all of that, and then just put period. They're not supposed to be parking in the street anyway, so, right?
So just no more than two commercial motor vehicles?
Yep, yep.
And I think it's good having it there more for enforcement. Like, like you say, there are probably people with four items. And their neighbors don't care and they're not being disruptive, so no one... But if there is someone who gets out of control crazy, at least you have something to fall back on.
Right.
Yeah. All right, so let's take it from the top, try to wrap this one up. So we have a couple things on the table. First is within the definition. It sounds like we want to, for this year, not go too far down the road of wholly within because it sounds like there are some outliers we need to think through or get feedback on. Do we wanna specify clearly incidental and secondary? How does the board feel about that without specifying wholly within?
So ended at, ended at, at residence and take out the rest?
Yeah, for now.
Okay. So that will solve the problem of any sort of outdoor things for now. Uh, next on the table, we have, um, the number of non-residents. Do we wanna, the options are leaving it one, or leaving as is, is of course an option, leaving it one and removing a special permit, upping to two and removing a special permit. Any thoughts on that one?
I'm in favor of upping it to two and removing the special permit.
Yep.
I'm okay with that.
Okay. Okay, next on the table, we have twenty-five percent of existing gross floor area. We have removed the four hundred square foot, whichever is smaller potential, that is now gone. Do we want to remove the special permit for a larger? There's no change in the twenty-five percent, we're sticking with the twenty-five percent.
Yep.
Any comments on that?
Nope.
Nope, okay.
So you're tak- taken out the special permit?
Yep. Okay. We have, also on the table, one unlit sign, but then we talked about the spotlight. So are we, except for one, is this the current one? Except for one sign of not more than two square feet, and we added?
No, I added what's underlined.
Oh, okay.
And I crossed out what is there right now. Before it said, as permitted in a residential district section, that actually allows for a lit sign. So I was gonna try to change it in the sign by law, and I thought, instead of going through all that work, it's easier to say except for one unlit sign.
But it says in the bylaw, that's what Bob pointed out, it says, no illuminated sign.
No, it says, no, he read it.
It says, in a residential district, no illuminated sign shall be permitted except when associated with, with an allowed, non-residential use.
And that's what this is, isn't it allowed?
No, a home occupation is a residential use. It's in the residential table, it's a residential use.
Allowed?
What does that mean?
It, whether you have a commercial or an industrial use.
See, to me, that's too complicated. I thought this just is, when you're going in front of a board, you just, it just is clear.
You have an existing bylaw. It, it, it's a lot easier to use an existing bylaw because you don't have to get up at town meeting and explain why you're, why you're adding to a bylaw. I mean, that's, that's no reason to do or not do zoning. But A, it avoids complications. And B, if you, if you start, um, like, even this thing with the, um, the, the vehicles, you know, no more than two commercial motor vehicles. Well, now we have to talk about, do you wanna change that one commercial vehicle someplace else?
Exactly.
Because, because then, right, you know, right now, the bylaw, if this was approved, contradicts itself. So, so we're gonna have to change that part of the bylaw, too.
Well, except for that footnote, six is only tied to a carport or a garage.
No, it's not, it's, it's...
If you look at six on that page...
Oh, the footnote itself, is it?
Yeah.
Right. But the, but it, but it, but it limits one commercial vehicle in, in town.
But it says it's tied to a carport or a garage, so, I don't know. I just think if I was reading the bylaw and I see footnote six, it's tied to a garage or a carport, so I'm gonna say, well, I'm a home occupation, that's tied to a garage or carport, I'm not putting in a garage or carport, so I, I want five trucks.
So, Bob, is there a, an overall limit of commercial vehicles that you can have in residential outside of this footnote, or is that the only?
That's it.
Okay, so if it's in a footnote, do you look at that footnote and apply it to other? So would that footnote apply to this?
It's, it's basically all I have. I mean, in other towns, it's very explicit in terms of how many commercial vehicles are allowed in any residential lot. Here, the only reference that we have currently is right here.
Okay.
Okay. You know, going to two, you know, for the home business is, is fine. But this, this here where it says, not more than one commercial vehicle shall be stored in a lot under the garage thing, is misplaced to start with.
Okay.
Doesn't make any sense.
Right.
All right, so I'm not suggesting, so Kathy, to your point about, like, impact on other areas, like a ripple effect, if we add it here, do we come back, do we need to just come, at some point, we need to come back and fix that anyway? And I'm not suggesting we do that now, but...
Well, I think you need to fix that now, because otherwise, our bylaw is gonna contradict itself.
Okay, so, but as of now, that only applies to, um...
Carport or garage.
The carport or garage.
So maybe there's gonna have to be a new thing written, some commercial vehicle?
I mean, I, historically, I mean, how this has been interpreted, that footnote is that the, um, that it's been enforced that you can't have more than one commercial vehicle on your property.
Okay.
We, we don't care whether it's in a garage or not.
Yeah, but that's not what it says.
If it's tucked in a garage, it's actually better because your neighbor's not gonna complain about it. But, I mean, you know, one, again, you know, I, I always think this guy on Hudson Street doesn't live there anymore, but he drove for Coca-Cola. And he had a Coca-Cola truck, a ten, ten-wheeler, right? Is that, um, not as, like, the box truck or whatever it's called? So, he, he parked there and his neighbors complained about it. He was allowed to park there because we say you can have one commercial vehicle. So I think if you're gonna, if you're gonna say, you know, two, two here, again, this, this just, this just, this just, this is just for home occupations. So, so can only home occupation, home occupations can have two vehicles, but anyone else can just have one?
So why do we change this to two? Did we want...
We were just taking trailers into effect. And if you don't determine a trailer as a vehicle, then I guess we can go back to one.
Okay, so then this doesn't, if, without trailers on the table, we don't even need to specify two? And we can just...
I still think we have to have it put there, no more than one commercial motor vehicle. Because this footnote, if you're a lawyer, you come in and you read our bylaws as they're written, you're gonna say, that footnote is only under a garage or carport. My client's a home occupation, he doesn't have a garage or carport, so I want five vehicles. You know, I think if it's wrong, it's tied to the carport, we need to specify something in here.
Okay, so what if this was just no more than one? And then you could, and then it's just all in line with whatever, ever... It's where you explicitly say, I mean, we only said new, two because of the trailer, right?
Yep.
So if we're just not talking about the trailer anymore and one is the current standard, can we just say no more than one commercial motor vehicle may be parked in the driveway? And then get rid of A through E? And then you, we don't have conflicts to deal with? You don't have to look at footnotes or anywhere else, it's all the same?
I do think for next year, though, if we don't have time today, we should... I do think for next year, though, if we don't have time today, we should fix the footnote because it is only tied to the carport, just to make our bylaws.
Yeah, so we should.
Consistent, yeah.
All right, so for future consideration.
Just take that line out.
Just take out the footnote?
No, not the footnote. Take out the line that says, "Not more than one commercial vehicle should be stored in such a lot."
But then there's nothing, then it's unlimited because the footnote is tied to the garage or carport.
Then put it in parking and loading.
Where's parking and loading? So we're gonna change the footnote to parking and loading?
No.
Off the carport?
No. You go to...
I just think it's easier to have it in black and white, right there, when people go down.
Seven oh nine oh three oh. Paragraph two, page eighty-eight. Paragraph A. Okay, parking and loading space requirements, residential uses. Add one, add bracket eight. No more than two commercial vehicles allowed on any residential property.
Yep, we can do that, it just goes into another bylaw, so I was trying to keep it easier. But if you wanna, we can do it that way.
Okay, board comments on this one? What do we wanna do with this one? Any comments down here?
What's the existing footnote?
It's under carport, I'm, in carport, so, it's in the use table.
In the use table?
Okay.
So it just applies to that one, uh, well, we use it across the board, but in our footnotes, it's just there. Do we wanna call it, I, I don't know if we wanna entertain a whole new bylaw, but I do like that idea as, like, a fix at some point. For the purpose of this one, do we wanna add it in here as a specific item? So it would say, "No more than one commercial motor vehicle may be parked in the driveway?" Or do we wanna do a whole new bylaw?
So, my vote would be to keep it consistent to what exists today, and this way, it's just explicit to home occupation, but it's, goes back and ties to with existing bylaws.
And then maybe at some point, Bob, your suggestion, we take a closer look at that section and then it'll make, does that make it easier or something?
I mean, it's, like I said, that, that one line.
I think we should add it while we're doing it.
It, 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 Amy is right, it could be misconstrued.
Yeah.
But technically, it would, after that limitation would normally have to be specific to that one section, to that one footnote. Okay? So that's why I'm saying it's, it's kind of, even when we applied it to a couple of people who applied, you know, it, 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 that line is out of place.
So I, so I think it would be, so you, you make the change to the home occupation, and then we also, you know, if, this is just, you know, the, um, then you make the change to, um, the carport definition, and then you make a change to parking and loading.
Right, so basically.
And then it's, it's clear and taken care of and, and everyone's.
Do you mind writing those down, or do you want me to try, take a shot at them?
I'll write those.
Oh, Kathy?
That's my job.
Okay, I didn't know who was boss, sir.
All right, how does the rest of the board feel about that? Does that make sense, Michelle?
Mm-hmm.
Really, does that make sense?
It does.
Parking and loading footnote, and then, um, home occupation. Okay, so it seems like we're agreed that we're gonna cross out A through E. Um, do we settle on the sign? Do we need, if we have that in the bylaw, do we wanna include it here? Right now, we do not allow lit signs anyway.
I just wanna read it one more time, what page was that on? Seven oh nine oh four oh?
Yep. So seven.
Signs. In residential.
So, in a residential, residential district, "No illuminated sign shall be permitted except when associated, except when associated with an allowed non-residential use or a lawfully pre-existing non-conforming business use."
I guess if that falls under that, I guess the way I was reading it, allowed non-residential use, I was reading that as a home occupation.
Okay, so this currently references, "As permitted in a residential district," in this section that we just read. So do we wanna refer to the section we just read or call it out separately? So Amy, you wanna call it out separately?
I did, but I guess as Kathy's defining it, if Bob also, if Kathy, Bob agree that number three, "In a residential district, no illuminated sign shall be permitted except when associated with an allowed non-residential use." And we're saying that means commercial or industrial, that home occupation wouldn't follow under that? See, when I first read it, I thought home occupation was allowed non-residential use, but it's not?
No, the, the way you read the, the use table is those, it's under residential uses.
Mm-hmm, accessory.
And, yeah, I mean, it's, right. You know, it's, it's listed as a residential, as principal uses and as accessory uses in, as a residential use, and that's what a home occupation is.
So are we fine with taking this, are we fine with leaving this one as is? Based on seven zero nine zero four, zero? Thoughts?
I'm okay with that.
Yep.
Leaving it as is?
Yep.
Forget it.
Yep.
I'm good.
Amy, does that make sense to you now?
Yep.
Okay. So, here's what we ended up with. We are adding, "Home occupation shall be clearly incidental and secondary to the use of the dwelling," I'm sorry, I read that completely incorrectly. "The home occupation shall be clearly incidental and secondary to the use of the dwelling as a residence," period. Nothing about wholly within. "No more, not more than two non-residents shall be employed on the premises," period. "No more than twenty-five percent of the existing gross floor area of the dwelling should be devoted to the home occupation, including any stock-in-trade commodities or products associated with the said use," period. Um, three is, uh, no change to three, that's staying as is. Okay. Um, the "No storage of hazardous materials in quantities greater than associated with normal household use should be permitted." Um, this one we didn't talk about, are we okay with adding this? Is this already covered? Do we wanna add this specifically?
I'd like to add it, I mean, I just saw it in another bylaw, too, and they, they used that.
I mean, I, I, I think you're, um, I think you're covered by the groundwater bylaw, which, which talks all about that. Um, and, and references throughout the groundwater bylaw, quantities, you know, not to be greater than, um, what's it say, Bob? Re- residential use or home use or something like that?
Expected normal homeowner use.
Yeah, so there's a, there is reference already to that in the groundwater bylaw.
Okay, are we adding it here or are we using the current groundwater bylaw? Thoughts?
I, I'd keep the current.
Yeah, I'll go back and I'll read it and, and then, yeah, it's probably there and then.
Anthony?
That's fine.
As long as it's in there, yeah.
You, you're okay if it longs in there? Okay. So as long as it's recovered on that one, that one's fine, okay. For the vehicles, Kathy, you're fixing parking and loading, the garage and carport footnote, and then, um, we'll just put it here as well, "No more than one commercial motor vehicle may be parked in the driveway," period. No A through E. Does that reflect the conversation we just had with everybody? Bob, does that reflect as well, what you, Kathy, you have all that on your side, okay?
I do, we jive on.
Okay, is there a motion to move this bylaw forward?
I make a motion, we move forward in the home occupation, um, bylaw as described by Carrie right now.
Okay, second?
Second.
Further discussion?
No.
All in favor? Okay. Okay. Last of the bunch. So this one, we, Anthony, this was what you had brought forward before. And I wanted, and I had put in here the possibility of talking about, uh, maximum height. So this was a, have this page, no, there it is, okay. So in this case, we are removing the waiver to reduce the minimum lot frontage by special permit. This is in the, for the duplex waiver, footnote number one for, sorry, this is on two different pages, RC, it's a footnote in RC for minimum lot frontage of a hundred and fifty feet. This removes the waiver to allow for one hundred feet. For consideration, I also wanted to bring up, um, I know that as part of our bylaw a few years ago, we had referenced the design review, I'm sorry, not design review, the design guidelines for duplexes. And we're a couple of years out and we're still trying to finalize those, so I wondered if in the interim, while we're kinda working through those, if we wanted any sort of height, maximum height added, or maybe as like, um, a percentage to the house next to you? Wouldn't it be X percentage taller than the house in the area? So that's a force for discussion. Any thoughts on this in general?
So on maximum height, this is where I'd ask, like, do you start from the front of the building? Or is it the back of the building, and if it's in the back of the building and it's a, you know, where, you know, your building can go down, we have a walkout, then?
It's the average, I did this once before.
The grade?
It's the average grade. So if you've got a high grade and a low grade on the perimeter of your foundation, take the midpoint of that. Then you go to the top of the roof and you come down to the bottom edge of the roof, and you take the midpoint of that. That's your height. Okay, not the peak, the ridge, but it's the, it's the median height. Okay, so you look at the top of the roof, the bottom of the roof, the line in the middle is your upper elevation. Same thing with your grade around the perimeter of the foundation. If you've got a high front yard and a low backyard, you take the median, the midpoint, and that's where you start. Okay, so, thirty-five feet? It's your typical two-story plus.
So, oh, so the roof line, you don't go to the top, you take an average between the attic ends and where the attic?
Where the bottom of the roof ends, where the gutter is.
Where the gutter is.
And the ridge pole, okay? In the middle is what you want, okay? And you don't take into account spires, antennas, cupoles, things like that.
Does that make a difference to you in terms of what you're thinking, or?
I always thought it was up to the top, but you're saying no.
It's, um, it's, it's actually in the building code and it's, um, generally in zoning codes, too. And we're only talking about median height.
I knew that way on measuring out for a building where you begin to, from the front and the back of the building. I didn't know if that was how you did your roof line.
Lots of the roof, too.
Okay.
So I guess the intent would be to make sure that we're keeping, in these types of developments and keeping consistent with the neighborhood, that we don't all of a sudden, like, for, you know, a neighborhood with small houses, all of a sudden has a height, a house put next to it that's double the height. That may be an issue with any sort of house, I suppose. But this was, um, maximum height was an issue that I think Judy Barrett may have brought up a, quite a bit, a design review in the discussions. And I, maybe, do you remember those conversations, or maybe you have some light to shed there?
No, she did say, she said the complaints, most of the complaints seemed to be around the height. When people were, um, concerned about the buildings, was the height of the buildings.
I may be confused, but you're proposing thirty-five feet maximum height on all two families, right?
Oh, but then, uh, sorry, so I don't even know if I, this may be not even putting it correctly, but then there's a footnote to not exceed a maximum of a height. Um, I'm sorry, I meant to put a percentage, and I don't think I did that.
Oh, you wanna have the footnote?
Yes.
Ah.
So you know what, I don't think my footnote is properly stated, I meant to say, like, exceed a percentage of the house, you know, of the houses directly abutting the lot.
'Cause it's already thirty-five, right?
That's right, right. So how could you make it, so first of all, the max, there's a maximum height, which, would it apply anyway? You're, maybe not, I don't know if the single-family height would apply. But if we needed to establish a maximum height, that would match what exists for single-family homes. However, the footnote would be that it could not exceed X percentage taller than the height of the nearest houses. So if you had all small ranches around, you wouldn't want double the height right next to it, is all, is what the purpose of this is.
So you're saying if the maximum height of thirty-five would be excessive to the houses next to it?
So if it was double the height or something, right, it would be, it would not be consistent with that neighborhood. And we could, this would, this would actually, in numbers, rather than us trying to guess, is it consistent, is it not? This would just be clear with numbers, that it, it wouldn't be consistent.
The only thing I think about that, Carrie and Bob, I don't, um, what you may think about this, it, like, we, um, and again, Bob deals with this more than I do, but you, we have not a lot, but I mean, over the years, people that have a one-story house, or kind of like the North Gate, one and a half, they've added a second story, or, you know, to, to in, increase the size of their house, that they're growing family or whatever. So would that do, would that do anything to, to that?
Well, this is the regulations for two-family dwellings only.
Right.
So would it? I, I don't.
I, I don't know, I'm just think, I'm thinking out loud, so if, um.
So what you're saying is, if it's an allowed ability for a single-family user to put a second story on, why would you not allow it for a two-family to, um, have the same equivalent height? I think what?
I mean, I get the intent.
Yeah.
But I, but I think it, it, it's, you know, that, that's a real difference in, in certain neighborhoods. And again, I know that's what the concern is, or one of the concerns. Um, but, so it's like, how, how do you, how, how do you allow someone to put a second story on their house, but then not allow it, but then keep a duplex if it's all one stories at a time?
I mean, that, that's one thing to consider, and the other thing, is I'm trying to imagine the mechanics of this, okay? You wanna build duplex and you have to go and determine the height of the neighbors to the left and right. You need to get, send an engineer out there and get permission to go on their property and take the measurements, okay? And then come up with a set of numbers for the application. Gotta get written permission from the landowner, technically, for the engineer to go out there and do the measurements of the house.
Okay.
You know, it's, it's, I'm, I'm just trying to imagine the mechanics of it.
No, I know, I know.
And, and, and dealing with, you know, you got a neighbor that, you know, one of these get-off-my-lawn types, you know?
Yeah, or doesn't want you to be able to.
I don't want that.
Right, right, um.
So how did Judy frame it?
I think, well, we're going to address this when we did the, the re, you know, all the design standards for two families, which we've never gotten to.
Well, I, but I think she, I think she thought that we should have a different, um, definition um, for how, for how we figure out the average, um, height of a, of a building. Bob wasn't here, I don't think involved with that at all, but I think that's one, I think that's what she was after, was that just in general, how we measure the height of a, of a roof, or the hu- the height of a house, I think she thinks should be different than how we do it.
Yeah, I was just telling Kathy the other day, I was in a duplex where I thought the roof line was much lower than some of the other ones, and I thought that really conformed to the neighborhood. It was very subtle, where some of the others have such high peaks, that, you know, you can understand why people go, oh, that's just too tall, right? So we never got around to that in the design to figure out how to, to work that out and how to make that work. But for photos, if you looked at one and you looked at the other, you'd say, oh, I get that. Whether you changed the height from thirty-five to reduce it down, I, I think in our discussions, we never got to that point.
Right.
So how far off are we from having that final guideline? What'd you say?
I know, it's a, um.
Two years we haven't even talked about it, 'cause.
Right, so, that's my concern, so now she, yeah.
Because we don't have her anymore as a consultant.
Right, it, it, you know, she, she, um, a- again, it, this, this is, you know, it's pathetic that I'm even saying this, but I mean, she keeps, you know, assuring me that it's coming, it's coming. Um, it was such a small job. it's coming, it's coming. It was such a small job. And, I mean, it was a thousand-dollar job. So she started it, you know, initially did some guidelines. You know, we sent her back some feedback, and then, you know, photographs, and, and the final product had, has not come. And, um. It, and I'll call her again tomorrow, you know? I mean, but again, they're guidelines. So, so it's, I don't think it's going to solve, in regards to what they say, I don't think it's, it's going to solve the issue here of, of the height. I mean, I, I think if, you know, I, I, um, I think for. You know, maybe what, what we were, what the board was originally talking about was the waiver, and maybe we limit it to, to whatever you want to do with a waiver this year, and then do something about the, you know, because we're kind of like doing zoning on the fly.
Yeah, okay.
And, uh, and you know, and, and, you know, in-house, we take a look at, you know, how, how we define, you know, the, the average grade.
Okay. That's okay with me. I just wanted to at least put out there, because I know we have that outstanding item. So maybe this will just help, if we push that along, then we'll, that'll solve that problem.
Yeah. So can the central mass regional planning help us with this at all?
Well, um, one of the things that I've asked Judy i- is about, you know, can, can she just sub out the completion of it, and we can amend the contract? And that was my last suggestion to her.
Okay. So unless anyone else feels differently, I'm willing to strike that for now, as we just made, it sounds like there's more involved than, to be continued.
Yeah, because I wouldn't even know what percentage and.
So do you, are you going to, are you suggesting though, to change the bylaw to, you know, to amend the bylaw to get rid of the waiver?
So that's on the tables from before, yes. So forget, that's, I'm, we can forget about the footnote and the maximum height. We just have right now the same thing we did before, which is the waiver removal. Any comments on this? Any further comments? No. Okay. Is there a motion to put forth this bylaw for the 20?
Hang on a second.
Oh, yeah.
You, you're thinking about taking out the waivers to go from 150 feet to 100 feet?
That's correct.
Okay. You've got a minimum lot width, which is what you're, which is the color keyed part. Are you also doing the frontage on the street as well?
No, I think that, I think the proposed change, Bob, would just be to get rid of the waiver, which, which gives the planning board the ability to go from 150 to 100 feet in, in the RC and the GR.
Right.
So, so if they took away the waiver, then the 150 feet stands. So you, the applicant would have to have 150 feet in the RC or GR in order to do a duplex. That's on page 53?
Yeah. Now, in the RC.
Yeah.
You also have that same lot frontage on the street. You've got lot width, which is, which would be 150 feet at the building line, but you also have a requirement for middle lot frontage of 150 feet at the front property line.
Right. So they, so the, the proposal would be to keep that.
Okay.
But to do away with the waiver that allows the board, that gi, that gives the board the, the jurisdiction to tell someone they can go from 150 feet to 100 feet.
Right.
So ba, so basically, it's, it's, um, it, it, it's keeping the chart as is.
Right.
But taking away the waiver ability.
Yep. And just for the, for the minimum lot width?
And frontage.
And frontage.
Okay, so you're going to change that one too.
So that, so it's, so it's just, it's de, it's deleting the waiver. So therefore, it's still, the chart would read that, you know, in the RC and the GR, you still have to have 150 feet. And then in the MSR in, in downtown neighborhood, you could have 100. I mean, the footnote doesn't apply to that. The footnote just applies to the RC zone. So with residential C, without the waiver, you have to have, you know, an increased lot size of 30,000.
Mm-hmm.
And then you have to have an increased frontage and lot width, I mean, lot width goes along with a frontage, at least our definition, that it's, it has to be 150 feet.
Okay, you still need to take that one out. Yeah.
It all comes up.
So your frontage and width reductions go away. That goes away and that goes away.
Taken off that footnote.
Yeah. You've got to take that one too.
Footnote one, yeah.
Yep. Foot, so footnote one would be deleted.
Right.
It's gone.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. So is there a motion to move this bylaw forward to the 2020 town law?
I make a motion that we move forward with the changes in bylaws to remove the waiver allowing for a 100-foot frontage reduction from 150 in RC and GR.
Oh, it's just RC?
Oh, RC.
Okay, second.
A second it?
Further discussion? All in favor? Okay. That concludes that. Thank you, everybody. That was a long process, but we made it. Okay.
No, instead of saying it's 7:30, you're saying it's 8:40.
Yes. It is 8:40. So do we have the public hearing announcement?
Um, yes, but they, you don't even really have to do that. You can just read the request.
Oh, okay.
To, um.
And hold it for next time?
So ju, just to, you know, to vote to continue the hearing.
Okay, it is 7:40. And on our agenda is a public hearing for Zero Bartlett Street, special permit per groundwater protection overlay district bylaw, and special permit site plan approval. A letter has been submitted, a request has been submitted in writing on January 16th, that asks regarding our application for site plan approval for our project at Zero Bartlett, we request a continuance to the February 18th hearing. So the board must vote to continue to the February 18th, which does exist, yes it does, and that would be at 7:00 PM. Do we have other hearings that day on the 18th?
No.
Okay. So for.
There's, I'm assuming you'll be continuing Starris. I mean, I think they'll, you know, they're going to be here for the 4th.
Starris is on the 4th?
Yes.
Okay. Is Starris the delivery that day, or presentation that day?
Uh, they want to do their presentation. We don't have their material yet.
Okay.
But their, their plan is to do their presentation to you on the 4th.
Okay. All right. So is there a motion to continue the public hearing for Zero Bartlett Street to February 18th at 7:00 PM?
I make a.
Oops, sorry.
I make a motion, we continue the hearing for Zero Bartlett Street to February 18th at 7:00 PM.
Second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor? Okay, hearing continued. Thank you. Okay, um, let's see. Why don't we go into the master plan items, so that we don't run out of time here? So next on our agenda, we have adoption of the master plan. So, shifting gears here. Where we last left off, we had our public hearing on December 10th. So we had a chance to get a full presentation, have a discussion, ask questions. Some feedback, we, at the time, we had asked for some feedback on the plan. So we did get a couple of letters that came in since the hearing. For tonight, if, um, what we're going to do is have a board discussion and not go into public comments, but for anybody who has feedback, or would like to submit written comments after this meeting, we will not vote on this plan until the 4th. So anyone is welcome, any member of the public is welcome to submit feedback to the planning department email. Does that, does that work best?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Just to bring the board up to speed on feedback we've received since the public hearing, we had a couple of people write in. I think everyone on the board has seen this, the feedback. We had a letter that just asked about making sure we had proper senior representation. We had a letter about just making sure that we take into account the historical society, as it's not funded by the town, but that it's still an important part of our community, and it's a community treasure, and just to make sure that it was properly represented in the plan. I think that Norm Corbin, who represented that area of the plan, felt pretty comfortable that it was. So I think that was the feedback there. And then as we've seen, not since the last meeting, but in general, I think the only other written feedback we've really received is from a, a few different letters from Gibb Chase, who submitted a couple of different documents to the board, which I think everybody has had a copy of over time, just in terms of, you're, you're welcome to look at them if you haven't seen them. But overall, just feedback on things like sustainability and making sure that we have the infrastructure to support growth, and in the event of build-out, then what? Just kind of taking different things into consideration. So if you want to borrow those, you can, if you'd like. Okay. So why don't we move on? I think probably the best way is if we go through each section of the plan. Any questions on the feedback that we've received so far? So I don't, we don't want to belabor that. Okay. So everyone, I think, has had a chance to review the plan and take a look at all of the feedback. I actually have some recommendations that I wanted to share with the board, and then anyone else is welcome as well to share. I'm just going to give everyone a copy.
I have some too. Should I share them now, or wait?
And then can you give, I actually have three copies of Kathy, if you want to give that to Kathy and Bob and.
I ran out of staples. So it's.
Okay, that's you. Okay. So I want to make sure we have enough time to get through this, and we have a 10: o'clock deadline, as we know. So let's start with the first section. I'm going to start with land use. So for the areas of, that I had recommendations for in land use, if you look at my document, you'll see on. LU22, LU23, and LU24. Really just wording a little bit, I, I just wanted to make it more about exploring different opportunities for the zoning bylaw versus a direct tie to the zoning bylaw, or, you know, for example, investigating the merits of density bonuses. Not really taking anything out, just sort of making sure that we accommodate for, making sure it belongs in our bylaw before just straight updating our bylaws. So that's what that section is about there. My only other comments in this section, we're just within the charts itself, which isn't here. I just, I noted that they were ended in 2005, which is 15 years ago. So that was just something for consideration in the future. And there was just something mentioned about sidewalks. And this was something that we consistently received feedback on during our public comments throughout the summer. A lot of people that were in the public that made comments during that time, really just a consistent drumbeat on sidewalks being important. And I know we have Route 20 going through town, but I hope that that's something we can eventually figure out to make that work, whether, you know, other towns that have Route 20 rolling through and have figured out something. So I hope that's something we can figure out. But those are just my comments. And those are just general comments, more so than edits. Amy, did you want to speak to any of your?
Okay. Um, so I actually want to thank the committee members too, because I never had a chance to do that. And I know they're not here, but maybe they'll be listening, because I think everybody did a great job. And I thought December 10th went well. But my concerns is the planning board and the town wants to use this as a working document. And in order for the information to be usable, it has to be current, and the tables and text should match. And when I read through the land use, my only, my major concerns with land use, but, um, my major concerns with land use is very confusing. Like, when you go through section one, is there's a, there's three sections, the baseline, the current, and the long-term development patterns. So the baseline conditions were mass GIS, and as Carrie just mentioned, they only went up to 2005. So I'm hoping we could maybe update them when they get more up to date. The existing, so you, because, all right, I, I just lost my track now. So there are three sections, and the baseline is mass GIS. The second one is existing land use. That uses assessor's data. And then the third section was called long-term development patterns, and that used zoning acreage, which I'm really, even though I've read it a bunch of times, I still don't understand how that's broken down. And I think the assessor data goes through open space, residential, industrial, but the zoning in the third section only goes by residential, commercial, and industrial. So the percentages in the second section can't be compared to the percentages in the third section, because they're all, they're not apples to apples. And so what I wanted to get out of this document as a planner, and talking about zoning, is just the basic chart, a chart that lists how much industrial land do we have right now, how much is developed, and how much is left to be developed. And when I read this first section, I, I couldn't find that, because in section two, it said we had 43 acres of industrial. And then I went to section three, and it says we have 1,800 acres of industrial. Oh, it was 480 in 18, so 1,800. So I was like, I just wanted one document that laid out how much we have, how much is developed, and how much is developable. And I couldn't get this from that. And in the third section, a lot of the information is written in written text. So I guess my main input was I wanted just one table that I could open up this document as a planner and get all the information. And over the past month or two, I've been thinking, how can we do that? And I went back to the original master plan, and there was something called inventory of land uses. And I attached that to my little sheet here tonight. And I thought the best way to fix that right now would just to be to get from the assessor an up-to-date inventory of land uses. It was in the original master plan. And if you look at the last, one of the last pages that I passed out, this inventory of land uses actually gives you how much industrial land we have, how much is developed, how much is left to be developed. That's something I couldn't get out of just reading all of the paragraphs. It took me a lot to go, and I was making my own charts, I was trying to figure out the numbers. I don't think a person could open up the land use chapter and say, okay, this is what we have, this is what we have left.
So is recommendation what you're proposed?
Yeah, my recommendation was a proposed, this was an easel, easier proposal. At first, I was wanting to check, change all the tables. I actually talked to Rick and, and Fran about it, and I talked about how we should be comparing apples to apples. And, but it was at the end of the plan now, and the con, the consultants were at the end of their time, and there wasn't a lot of time to do that. So over the last couple of months, I've been thinking, how could we add something to the plan that would give us the information we needed? And I went back to the original master plan, and, and it was 10 pages, page 33 to 43. And it, it basically laid out how much, it's for all of it. It's for commercial, industrial, agriculture, how much we have and how much is left. So if I was a planner, and I wanted to look at our industrial land, I would know, this is how much industrial land we have, this is how much is developed, this is how much is undeveloped. It would just give me a clearer picture.
Okay. So recommendation to include updated land inventory from the assessor. So recommendation to include updated land inventory from the assessor.
Yep, either in this section or as an appendix at the end.
Okay. So it could be an appendix as well.
Yep, I just, I was confused.
Okay. Any other comments? Michelle, any other comments from you?
Well, we had extensive conversations about that the baseline conditions section is updated every 15 years. So this is 15, we're on the 15-year mark. So, I mean, I think when that data comes out, that certainly can be put in, right? But that's why it's 2005. You're just on your 15-year mark right now, which is 2020. So we have a lot of discussion about that.
Okay.
And I guess what I was trying to explain too is all three sections don't compare. So our baseline, which is the past, is done as land cover. And our existing use now is assessor data, which is land use. Those two are different. So you couldn't say, well, when you read the baseline, it was like, okay, this was the percentage change of land cover between 1985 and 2005. But now, this is what we have as land use. Like, it should have had a table, which is the other table I included, where you had historical land use, current land use, and this is the land use change. The very first part of the section was land cover, the second one was land use. That's just one of my comments.
Okay. So, but not just feedback for Amy's stuff, but do you have additional edits? I just want to make sure we put all our edits on the table.
Oh, yeah, I do. So that was the first page. And then, not only does it have to be a usable tool, which I think adding this inventory of land uses might help it, but there were a couple errors in the first section. The table and text need to agree. So my first note, page 2.3, the table and text don't agree, because the table talks about low, medium, higher. But the text talks about low, medium, high. So I just thought the table and text should match.
So where are you talking about?
Okay, if you look at the bottom of the page where, page one, I wrote table and text don't agree. Page 2.2.
Page one of your, of this?
Of my handout, yep.
Okay.
At the very bottom, it says page 2.3, which is page 2.3 of the master plan.
Oh, yeah, I get, I see.
There was a section where we talked about low, medium, and higher. And the chart says low, medium, higher. But the paragraph talked about low, medium, high. There's no high density on the table. And they did add a footnote at the bottom to try to fix that. But that footnote, that's not on the chart. Like, it's a number that's pulled out of the sky, because it's not even on the chart, but there's a footnote to fix it. Like, I don't think there should be a footnote. I think the numbers in the text and the table should match. That was the comment. And the second one is the same, the table and the text don't agree. So table 2.2, land use, states that we have 480 acres of industrial acreage. And then you go to page 211, and it states we have 1,800 acres of industrial land. And I don't really have any answer to that. I just, I just think we need usable data. And again, that points back to my reason for having the inventory of land uses, because then I will know how much industrial land do we have? Do we have 480 acres or do we have 1,800 acres? But when I went and read this, I don't know the answer as a, as a planning board member.
Okay. So you, your comments are for table and text don't agree for 2.3, table and text don't agree for 2.2. And at some point, when data comes in at that 15-year mark, we should update the land inventory, either in the chapter or in appendix, when available.
And it'd probably be coming out soon, like, you don't, 2005 data is so long ago.
Okay.
So it tells, it talks...
Can I make a couple of comments before you?
Yeah, sure.
Get going here. Given the fact that we're on camera and, and comments are being made that, you know, the consultant ran out of time, the tables don't match, the data doesn't work, that is not true.
Okay.
It is not, I understand that you're getting comments from the planning board, but we went over and over and over all of those comments Amy just brought up at the master plan steering committee meetings several times.
Okay.
And, and explanations were given how each table is different. You're not comparing apples to apples, you're comparing land coverage to land use, to that acreage taken up by those land uses or zoning districts. So they're different. And it provides you with all that data. And so to say that one paragraph, we went over and over again about this high density versus higher density. So, so this has all been, at least so far, these comments were discussed.
Okay. That's okay. I think, so I don't think we're going to necessarily vote on any of these things or make, take action. I think I just want to get everything on the table, so we know, like, what everybody's feedback is, so that we're just getting it out there.
I just wanted to point out that even though it was brought up and they put it as a footnote to fix it, why, why can't the text match the table? Why do we have to add a footnote to the bottom to add high density, higher density or high density, which isn't even on the table? Why wouldn't you just do the paragraph and use the numbers that are on the table? Like, you can say higher density is this, but that's not any of the numbers in the table.
Okay. All right, I want to just keep moving, because we have a lot of feedback.
I just have to finish the last part.
Okay.
So I went through the three sections. And the third section also has to do with long-term development patterns, which is zoning. I guess what I really wanted to do, because Kathy just said that they explained it over and over and over again, is as a person who opens up this book for the first time, or even me, who's opened it up quite a few times, I don't understand the third section and how it's broken down. The present, the percentages are different than the second one. So I guess I wanted a little explanation on how, how it's broken down. Like, it talks about acreage and the second one talks about acreage, but they don't match. So I guess I wanted some sort of explanation, maybe underneath long-term development patterns. I'm assuming that zoning residential, commercial, industrial? Because it just didn't, it didn't make sense how it was broken down. And another part I wanted to talk about is there were different sections under that section, where it goes through RA, RB, RC, all the different zones. And RA, RB, RC, and GR are in percentages, and the last two are in acreages. So when I was trying to make up my own charts and tables to see how it all played out, I had to convert them all. So I thought it should all be consistent. It should either be, I thought it should be in acreage. Just trying to get it consistent. So someone comes in and reads this. And I also thought as a planner, that that section should be as a table, because you're reading all these, these paragraphs and it's talking about certain percentages here, there, and everywhere. It would be a useful tool and really easier to see as a table.
Okay. So then...
And the recommendation there was also to use the land inventory, because that would answer that question too. It just would, I think for someone to come in and read it and read all these separate paragraphs, and they don't compare to the different sections, it's, it was confusing.
Okay. So some comments on clarity and consistency. Michelle, do you have any comments for this section?
Nope.
Melanie, do you have any comments?
I do not at this time.
Anthony?
So one of the things that kind of, I just noticed that stuck out to me was the, was LU two-four. And I do like, I do like the way that you rewrote that. And I, I think that reads a little better to me. As far as the data and everything else, I mean, if, if the data is correct, then it's fine. I mean, you can just validate, I mean, what Amy's points are in terms of everything behind it, but that I don't know.
Okay. So just so everybody knows what Anthony's referring to, instead of just investigate density bonuses and density transfer credits, I had suggested investigate the merits of density bonuses. Just because I think there's a lot of conversation there about them and how they work and pros and cons. So just to kind of figure out, you know, defining like what that, what we're looking at there. And just to see the merits of how that could work in our town. So really, that was just framing that investigation a little bit. The, the comment I mentioned about the zoning bylaws, instead of just putting update the bylaws, it was more just review the zoning bylaws, just to make sure that it actually was something we wanted to update it with. Whether that was related to the, that was related to the visual preference survey to determine what kind of developments the town prefers in downtown. And then review the town's zoning bylaw for opportunities to accommodate those preferred development types. Or review the town's bylaw for opportunities to consider mixed uses in downtown. So it just kind of frames it a little bit to make sure that we're, you know, making sure it's, as a planning board, that we've reviewed it, we've agreed it belongs in the town, and that's what my change was about. Any immediate comments on land use in general? So that was that. Okay. For housing. So for this particular section, the comment that I put here in key findings was, I thought that the survey results reflected a significant priority on a couple of things that weren't necessarily in the key findings. However, it made a goal, but then didn't make any other recommendations. And that was really about things like protecting the existing character of the neighborhoods. And a lot of the survey responses, so when I was reading through them, and I read through every single comment, there, there was a lot of concern by people for things like, you know, sorry, I got to switch my server. A lot of common themes about just overdevelopment and making sure, checking, making sure that we have the infrastructure supported and, and making sure, what's the impact of development? And different things like that, that people kept commenting on for, for the types of developments that we've been doing or what they'd like to see. So my key finding was really just mentioning the priority that includes balancing overdevelopment, evaluating the impact of increased development, and protecting the existing character of the neighborhoods, which I didn't think was necessarily explicitly stated and, and at the commensurate to the level that it was stated in the surveys. The other recommendations that I made, again, similar to the density bonuses, was just exploring the merits of an inclusionary housing bylaw. So just similar type of frame for that. The other piece was related to H2-1 and H2-2. So what I wondered for this was, if we were to do a housing production plan as listed in H2-6, then my suggestion would be for a lot of that, the housing price point study or whatever that would look like, would be part of a more comprehensive housing production plan. So that, that way, you know, in that case, you can get a grant for something like that. And, you know, if it's important to review those things, then what, let's not stop there. Let's include it as part of a broader plan and make sure that we look at things like impact, so an impact analysis study. Also, for the senior component of it, we talked a lot about senior, senior housing and affordability. What I wanted to make sure we do on this is actually call out seniors separately. I don't think they were represented, I don't think council and agent was actually a member of the committee, represent, was there a member of the committee for council and agent? No. So what I, what I thought there was, you know, if we're really concerned about senior housing and affordability, let's call it out separately. There are towns that actually get grants to do senior housing plans. So, you know, they have unique housing needs, they're in a little bit of a different situation. I think that they have been trying to, you know, I think we've all seen the buttons, the 25% buttons that they've had. I think that they are trying to tell us something, like, they want to be seen and heard. And I think it's important to call them out separately and address those concerns for that constituency of the population. So that was really the thought behind making sure we work with senior groups for, to explore housing options and the senior housing plan component of it. And then just making sure we, any, any efforts that we make are, would be included as part of something tangible, like a production, housing production plan, that wouldn't necessarily have to be funded by taxpayers. I think that was the extent of my edits in that section. I don't know if there are other comments. Oh, and the other thing was, again, related to the theme of maintaining the existing character of neighborhoods. So it was specific to goal two, we talked about accommodating growth while maintaining existing character of the neighborhoods. But then we didn't really follow it up with any recommendations that explicitly supported that. So I wanted to make sure that we explicitly supported maintaining existing character of the neighborhoods, just as a, as we're thinking about the different kinds of developments, to make sure that we, we keep our eye on that, because that seemed really important to people. So that was the extent of mine. Amy, do you want to speak to any of yours here?
Yep. When I looked at it, mine went back more to probably the implementation part. The way I looked at it was, and it came out in the plan that we've met our 40B and we're at 11 and a half percent 40B affordable housing. And I went back and I read a 2012 housing plan too, and I think we were 11 and a half percent back then.
We're, we've decreased. We're, we're at 11.3.
11.3.
We've lost some units.
Yep. So, and back then in 2012, it actually said that the Dunia Gardens hadn't been added to the inventory yet. Do you know if those have been added?
Oh, gotcha.
Okay. But back then, they weren't. Okay. So, but back to the master plan, the way I, I went down all the housing and the implementation plan is I felt that before we did H2-1, which was undertake a study, that we really had to do the housing production plan first. So on my second page of housing, it says the housing production plan needs to come first to let us know what do we need for housing right now? Like, what, what, what do we need? We shouldn't do the study about price points until we know what we need. So the H2-6 is short-term, which I think is good. Then H3-1, I thought should come second, because now the housing production plan is done. You have to go to the town and the selectmen and say, okay, municipally, what can we support? What can the school support? What can the sewer support? So H3-1 is midterm, which I agreed with that. But then I looked at H2-1, which is the price points, which is, I felt should follow those two. So I, my recommendation was to make H2-1 long-term after we've done the housing production study. And after we've done how much the town can, can absorb, then we go to, okay, now we can look at specific studies, like the price points. And when I was reviewing all my notes, even the consultants in January 3rd, 2019, on their documents, said, it's hard to tie price points to housing, suggests something at a higher level. So I thought if we went through the production study first, the housing production, then the town study, then by then, we would know, is the price point the right study to do? Or is there a different study for housing we have to do? So I, my recommendations were to change H2-1 from short-term to long-term, because it's $2 science, which means it's $25,000 to $100,000. And since we've already, we're at 11.3%, it's not an emergency right now to do it short-term, I think we should follow the proper steps to get to that point. So I was actually going to recommend we change H2-1 to... So I was actually going to recommend we change H two dash one too to say, after completing the housing production plan in H two dash six and identifying the town's capacity to support increased housing demands with infrastructure, which is H three dash one, if recommended by the consultants, consider undertaking a study to understand housing price points. So I wasn't, you know, trying to get rid of it. I just thought we had to follow the proper steps to get to that point. I didn't think it should be short term, I didn't think it should be the first study. And it also is a lot of money. So maybe we could use CMRCP or grant money to do something like that. Those were just my edits, and they're on my piece of paper.
Can I just say something? So for the master plan committee, we had, I think this is probably sent several times over and over again, was just because it's in this order doesn't mean that it's actually going to happen.
Right.
But it was through the implementation committee was how it's going to be determined.
Well, it was a short term right here.
Right. But just because in the sequence of the order, it was not gonna.
But I think the way we draw it out.
No, I get that you don't see that as short term.
Right.
But I'm saying in the sequence.
Yeah, I understand that. But I thought by doing short term, midterm, long term, that sets the sequence.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just want to put the cart before the horse.
Michelle, did you have additional comments?
No, I mean, she was just bringing that up, and I remember we discussed that several times over, that.
Yeah, but that's not what I'm trying to say. I just think, I'm trying to do it by short term, midterm, long term. I'm not trying to change H one, H two, H three. I'm not trying to change the sequence, the numbering.
Okay. Anything, Mellie, from you?
So if I understand correctly with the housing, the goals, goal one is not necessarily the most important.
No.
The most, uh, yeah, significant one to get done in that order, is that correct?
There's no order.
Okay.
There's no order.
Okay.
And it may have been that one and, um, so it may have been that the housing price study and the housing production plan were short term because they were sort of simultaneously, they were going to, if you're going to do them in a two-year period, you do them together.
Might as well collaborate on those.
So that may have been the reason why, I mean, again, we're going back, I can't remember the discussion, but I do know that a couple of people would say, do you want, should two be one or whatever? We all agreed that it was not one specific sequence of how things would happen. That would be decided upon the implementation committee, was that how we decided? Okay. And I can't tell you why, I'm assuming, we can't have discussion here with the audience, and there are people in the audience who know this better than me, but I think the housing price points and the production plan were together for a reason because they sort of were the data that you needed to then move to the next step.
Yeah, I think that makes sense to, so my, what my suggestion was basically making it, putting it together because they weren't clearly together in the way it was outlined. So if you actually put them together, then you have the price point study as part of the production plan. And then you have a potential to even get a grant to do that versus funded.
Right, I think, Amy, you were saying, do the plan first, do H two second, and do the price study third.
Oh, I see. No, I was doing this, and then this second.
This second.
I was doing this first, that second.
Oh, second.
Short, medium, long. Because I just thought if you did short, medium, they might say, well, that isn't the right study to do. But maybe they, well, maybe in short term, they'll say, that's the study that you do.
I think if I recall the discussion, the production plan and the housing price points all had to do with obtaining data to move to the next level, which is why the next level is midterm. I don't know.
As long as they're kind of tied together, I just didn't think that should come before that. This seems like the most important part of it.
Did you have a follow-up to that, Mellie? You had a, you were clarifying?
That, that clarified, you know, what I was asking. One of the things I did want to know was how, it is one of the tables back here that talks about how the, some of the public comments and the, um, the feedback were rated. So, so based on the public's input, you guys determined what was more important and less important? If I understand correctly, it was weighted, certainly? And, you know, just some of the, what was on the computer or what was on the, um, you know, online was categorized differently than what was actually up on the board. So one had four categories, the other one had five. So the weightings on those answers would be different.
So I would say that the fee, because this was, would you say it's a year or would you say?
Eighteen months.
Yeah.
I would say the feedback evolved.
Okay.
That's the best way to use the word evolved. So your feedback that started on week one may not have been the same feedback that you
Okay.
had in six months or in a year or eighteen months. Because as the discussions evolved and your stakeholders and everyone went from one to another, that's how you, the document became more mature.
Yeah.
And more well-defined versus ideas like out here.
Agreed, disagree, neutral.
Yeah.
It went far more specific towards the end.
Right.
Okay. That makes sense.
In the end, total consensus from the committee that even though you might have these done with one, two, and three, the implementation committee is going to figure out how to sort through that.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah. Yeah. And who exactly are the stakeholders? I, I didn't quite get that.
So stakeholders would be, if you're talking about senior housing, your seniors in the community. If you're talking about your business community, you'd be your business owners. So those are stakeholders.
And were they, were they selected or solicited separately? Then the online or the community feedback?
So I think because the entire community was actually asked to give input. I mean, there were clearly, when I went to a lot of the sessions, there were seniors there that gave input about whether, I'm sure that the senior center had a role in distributing it out to their, you know, people who would visit the senior center. I don't, you know, how do you define a senior? Is that anyone who's sixty and over? Or is it seventy over? Or is it fifty-five and older or whatever? I don't know how they defined getting out to their senior community, but there was certainly feedback on that. Your business community, I think they went and specifically targeted a large business owner, maybe like someone who had the size of a San Cobain or, you know, Federal Express, like those large size versus a small or medium-sized business owner for feedback.
From non-residents? Or from residents?
No, from residents. It's like someone who would own like a business owner.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, a discussion, yeah.
Okay, all right.
And then, I'm trying to think of, well, stakeholders, if it came to the section that's on public facilities, it would have been staff, right? You ask your staff about that. So with residential and housing, it would probably be more of, that went out to the greater community and that evolved over many questionnaires or opportunities to give input, right?
Right, but they were the same questionnaire that went to everybody, is that correct?
Right, exactly.
Were there specific ones going? I guess what I was asking is, were there specific questionnaires going to specific stakeholders that, that maybe we as the public didn't have the input on? I didn't, I didn't understand why they were separated out, that's all. That's it.
But the questions did change over time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. That's all from me.
So, just a few things that I noticed here, but late in the fall, I had done some modeling, and I don't even, bored an afternoon, and I was looking at affordable housing as a, as a compared to our housing stocks in Northborough. And then I basically put it, put together a spreadsheet where you could put in percentage growth, you know, if, if our housing stocks grew by five percent or ten percent. Or you could even throw in numbers, and it would just throwback, it would give you what our percentage of affordable, affordable housing, how it would be impacted by that growth. And, and so this was many months ago, and I've since lost the spreadsheet, but I do remember I'd put in some significant growth, and it really took a lot to get below, to get below that 10%. It was significant. So, and while I think, you know, affordable housing is important for the community, I think to Carrie's point, very important is something that I think we have to have a more focus on at this point is probably the senior housing. I mean, I think that's more of a dire focus that we should be looking at. So the H one two kind of struck out at me with the inclusionary. And not saying take it off, but I liked the way Carrie wrote this and said, change it to explore an inclusionary housing bylaw to explore the merits of an inclusionary housing bylaw. I like that. And then on H two three, we have identify appropriate areas for missing metals. So when I think of missing metal, you know, I think of like garden apartments and high-density type housing again. And I think maybe change that to, instead of identify, to investigate. So not take it off the table, but maybe, I don't know, take some of the weight off of it.
Any other comments?
No.
Okay, I'm realizing that I skipped, um, the natural, historic, and cultural, the second section. Natural, cultural, and historic resources. It was actually the second section, I skipped over it by mistake. I, I didn't mean to. Are there any comments on this section at all? On the side, anything? Okay. Okay, I did not, I did not either. All right, so I think that to summarize what we had here in housing, so we had, just making sure we reflect that existing character of neighborhoods type piece. Just reflecting that, you know, the consistent survey results were really about just trying to balance things a little bit and really keeping an eye on impact of when we do develop or build or whatever we do, what's the impact? We need to understand the impact of that. I think there was, Amy had comments that were related to maybe some of the timing, which comes into play for implementation. I think we recognize that this isn't in order of importance, it's just a list of recommendations. We also had, just making sure seniors are called out separately. I think the other component was just joining the pricing point, the price point study with the, with the production plan, as you mentioned, Michelle, just putting those pieces. And then reflecting just an impact study. Did I miss anything that came out of here? Amy, was yours about order or did you have anything specific?
Um, well, yeah, well, in the implementation, I was just asking to have it be long term. But I guess if you're tying it in to the comprehensive housing plan, then we can. And I guess as long as they're together, I guess that makes sense.
Okay. So that no longer applies.
No, as long as that's what everybody feels.
Well, I know, we don't necessarily need to vote on it, we do not, but just to make sure that we understand.
Yeah.
If those are tied together, there's really.
I think that would help. I guess the way, I know it goes one, two, three, and it's not in order, but the way it was number one and short term and high priority, I just wanted to make sure the cart didn't go before the horse. And I guess if you tie the cart and the horse together.
Okay. And then Anthony, you just had a comment of just a language change from identify to investigate.
Correct.
That was you. And Mellie, yours are just simple, yours were just clarification questions, but no comments specifically?
Nope.
Okay, so that's everything on the table for that. Okay, what if next? Economic development. So for this one, so for my, for my feedback, I just wanted to incorporate two different, to make it clear that we need some sort of downtown development plan and some sort of economic development plan because, you know, sitting at the CMRPC executive committee, I see a lot of the different things that other towns are doing in the area and the different grants that they're getting and the different opportunities that are out there. And these are some big ones that constantly come through. And I think there's an opportunity for, um, for us to start to apply for grants like that when it's appropriate. So I just wanted to make sure that our master plan reflected those types of, you know, this is what we were saying, which it sounded like it was. I just wanted to actually use those kinds of words to make sure they were there. And besides an economic development staff, I, I think, I saw there was an IDC committee. I don't know if that's our economic development committee.
It's industrial.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
Okay. So that's what I was wanting, you know, if we had an economic development committee so that we have, if we happen to lose the staff in charge of economic development or we don't have the staff, like, who carries the ball forward and make sure that we, you know, it's such an important piece, and another thing stressed in these surveys is that, you know, more than anything else, that people want to see that downtown or they want to see that downtown plan or that economic plan. And I just thought they're really important components. The only other comment I had was, um, um, B six. Oh, I don't know if the numbers are correct anymore because I.
This one? Five, nine?
Oh, sorry, it's not.
It's where ED one dash one is, the goals and recommendations.
Implementation section, it's nine dash eight. It starts at the bottom with nine dash eight.
Yeah, my number's no longer accurate at the bottom. Um, the other thing was just, there was something in here about a real estate advisory firm creating a redevelopment strategy. And the strategy included an analysis of appropriate uses, scale, dimension, design, as well as the infrastructure and services needed to support these redevelopments. To me, that sounded like a regional planning agency, a job for someone like that that could actually take a look at a local and regional level, which we've outlined in the intro paragraph, and be able to speak to those things. I wasn't sure what a real, was there any, what was the real estate? Do you know what a real estate, can you explain what that is at all?
We had a, as part of, we're the partners with VHB, we had a real estate land use firm.
So it's a real estate land use firm? So maybe it's just.
Well, that, that particular firm that, that we subcontracted with once.
So maybe it's, if that's fine, if it's like, if those are their expertise, I just, my overall concern is just like, if that's the strategy we want, just to make sure that that agency's expertise corresponds with what we'd want for a deliverable. I, I just, I tried to look up real estate advisory firm and it just didn't make sense to me. So that was just a suggestion for whether it's a regional planning agency or maybe it's a real estate land use firm is a better term. Just making sure we match the skill sets to the deliverable. That was it for me. I don't know, let's see.
Economic development, right?
That's economic development, yeah.
I mean, that, that actually makes sense. We didn't have a lot of discussion about that on what, how do you define a real estate advisory firm? It was only advised to us by the consultants. But, you know, if you want to, I, I agree with you, if you need to define that or further.
We just match it. If we, if that's the deliverable we want, as long as that's the agency that does it, that's fine. I just want to make sure.
I don't actually remember having a lot of discussion about that at all.
Yeah.
Okay, any other comments?
How would you update it? Would you just leave regional planning agency or do we want the slash real estate advisory firm? Or, I, I like how it's regional planning agency.
Yeah, I don't, I just wanted to put it out there as a, as something that I've noted. It doesn't, we don't have to solve it today, we may get some feedback on that. But that was just something that I was curious about and thought we should think about.
With ED two dash one, I agree that we should add an economic development committee because a bunch of times at the meetings it was discussed, there may not be enough funding to get a staff. So like, at least until we get a staff person, or Westboro supposedly has a really good economic development committee, you know, at least we can start the process. But other than that, I mean, I agree with all, everything you had here, I think it looks good.
You didn't have anything else?
No, I didn't have anything else to add.
Um, Michelle, did you have anything?
Nope.
Any comments over here?
No, not to me.
Um, let's see. One other comment that wasn't necessarily addressed in here, and I'm not suggesting it as a edit to this plan, but maybe the planning board just thinks about in our, our dream circumstance where we can never bury the power, the power lines downtown. I don't know if it's just a dream. Maybe it's just a dream. Does that laugh? Okay. I think laughter reassures.
About twenty years ago, the quote was, it's a million dollars a mile.
Okay.
So I can only imagine what it is today. Then what you have to do is then tax each business or homeowner where you bury the, because we've looked into it.
Right, I know. I'm sure. It's not as suggested. I just thought.
So what we tried to do.
It would be lovely. There's no one that will disagree with you.
Yeah, a side note on that. So what we tried to do, and I think John Shunder actually came up with the idea, was to put more trees in the downtown because then your eyes aren't attracted as much to the power lines as they are to the trees. And it's a way of buffering the power lines. That happened until Mass Highway came in and took our trees down.
Oh, no.
We have a nice new expanded Route 20 and sidewalks and.
Okay. So that's it for that. I feel like I'm missing section one. Open space. I have no comments on open space. Oh, I do have one comment. The section on turf fields, as a former soccer coach warmed my heart to see. Anything?
No, I didn't have anything.
Anthony or Millie?
No.
Nothing, a question at all.
Oh, you had a question?
Nope, nothing.
Public facilities. So this was a question that I noted in here as I'd be curious or I would appreciate input from those more familiar with the process. I just put this in as maybe a suggestion to think about more so than a strong recommendation or edit. So there was a, there was a piece about just making sure we represent public facilities. So I'll just read from the, the law that defines master plan has a piece that says, scheduled expansion or replacement of public facilities or circular, sorry, circulation system components. And the anticipated costs and revenues associated with the accomplishment of such activities should be detailed in this element. So I didn't see a lot of mention about, you know, how do we track public facilities and how do we track the scheduling? And I'm sure that all exists. I don't know if we need to memorialize it here or not. But I just put it as a suggestion that maybe, I just said, this is my attempt at trying to include it. But I'd appreciate input from those more familiar with the process to see if we, how we want to memorialize it if we need to. I don't know. I just wanted to bring it up here as a thought. And that edit was just, including future growth projections into updates of existing town plans as part of a coordinated SIP process that inventories all public facilities with a prioritized schedule of all necessary updates and repairs. Could exist. If it does, great. If we want to memorialize it, just a thought. I don't know if there's any other thoughts on public facilities.
Memorialize it as in like put it in the schedule or?
Well, there was just nothing. I felt like public facilities didn't actually address the, the public facilities.
Maintenance.
The maintenance or repairs or schedule or cost or how do we, do we have any plan, do we need to? I don't know. It's not my area of expertise. So I wanted to just put it out there. If it's something we need to discuss further. Or you, do you have something here?
No, I don't, I don't think I have a thought on it right now.
Just something to, for consideration, not necessarily something to put. But if we wanted to speak to, if there is a process and we wanted to include it here, it may be nice for people to see like, how are we tracking it? How could they find it? How could I see what all of our facilities are and who's coming up next in the works for any sort of?
I thought there was mention of a facilities manager, but is that something different under this? Is that not under this, right? Six year capital plan.
The facilities manager was a position that was funded at last year's town meeting.
Yeah.
But, but a person hasn't been hired yet.
Okay.
But, but that, I mean, you know, this, this falls under obviously, you know, the VPW now.
Yeah.
And through the capital plan process. And then the, the, the facilities manager is more about, or it's going to be.
The day to day.
The poor person. It's going to be multiple things. But it'll be, it'll be the day to day. It's going to be overseeing all the capital projects in, in town.
Okay.
You know, amongst other.
Okay. Not so much the scheduling, the, any maintenance. Okay.
The other areas were just surrounding communication and the website. So my comments here were just more including modernizing because if this is a plan that lasts for 20 years. You know, today it's the website, but we've got to imagine that things will be changing over time. So how do we just keep up with technology and the different platforms? And I just gave an example of maybe social media. I think other towns have generated some excitement when they do things with the social media thing. Or, you know, obviously not something we have to do tomorrow, but if this master plan stands the test of time, do we just want to make sure we're trying to modernize what we have to just stay current? That was my suggestion there. In the, in PFS one dash six, it was more about, so ease of use on the town's website and expanding it to include modernized communication vehicles such as social, social media to just reach residents of all generations. And I mean, our tech skills will probably be obsolete in 20 years. So who knows how we'll be communicating.
We won't be.
We won't be. Sending pictures.
Yeah.
Who knows?
Selfies. Just do selfies.
Same thing for PFS two dash two. It was just modernizing communications to accommodate new technologies and updated platforms. So that was that. And then the final one was just, schools are important to people in this town and that's clear in the survey results. And there's a lot of comments just about updating our schools. And, you know, if we are to develop, you know, increase development or things like that. I just wanted to put something that kept an eye on school size and, and or make sure we're in queue with the Massachusetts School Building Authority to qualify for partial reimbursement of design, construction costs. So if, if there's a line and we need to get ourselves in it, just to make sure we're in it. If we need to, you know, we have Peaslee, Malacan, a couple others I think that are up for construction at some point. I just don't, I think people want to understand when that happens. And if there is a process for that, just to make sure we're already, we have our name in the hat. Or maybe that's not the right way to say it.
The queue.
The queue. Yes. So that was that. A lot of people commented, or maybe this isn't the, this wasn't necessarily a, a change of mind, but just talking about a new community center for meetings. And just trying to figure out how does the senior center play in that? Like, is there an opportunity to? This was mentioned in the plan already, but I just wanted to put it out there just separately. You know, how do we leverage that senior center and can we do more with it or think about that? Maybe that's not in our purview. It's just, I thought it was just interesting when people start talking about developing a whole new community center. We do also have this great resource, this already there as well. So.
Carrie, I just had a quick question. Did you, everything that is highlighted here in gray, did you want to, it says effective capital planning?
I didn't have that. That was already there.
Those are there?
I just, I just put, that was sort of like when I was thinking about public facilities, what the definition was in that intro paragraph. That was, that was just kind of thinking about, if we're, if part of what the section represents, did we actually accomplish representing? Did we actually prioritize short and long term investments or have a plan to do that?
Okay.
That was the area I didn't really have expertise in necessarily.
Right. I think we're, just to give you a little feedback on, there are, you can see there are some bullets here where they talk about, after they get past the fire station, they talk about additional parking at the library.
Yeah.
There's no direct access to the front of the library or additional flexible meeting or activity spaces. I was on the fundraising committee. I chaired the committee to help raise funds for the addition. And at that time, which was, how many years ago would you say that was the addition? Maybe?
Fifteen.
Fifteen years ago. We had talked about that being potentially maybe with not as many people using books and stuff like that or going to a library, but a community center. So I think it doesn't always have to be the senior center. It could be like a combination of two buildings. So I think you might see long term, the use of the library more as a community center as people go to take out book slots. But how do you utilize that building?
But in need space.
Yeah. So it looks like sort of tapping into that when you look at your parks and the other stuff. I think that's one of the discussions we had.
Yeah. That's good. Any other comments on public facilities? Down here, nothing?
Was that on the, oh, that's on the buildings. Okay.
Down here?
Back to parks, but no.
No, I did not.
Well, I was back on parks and open space for a second.
Oh, sure.
Because one of the things that actually came up at the CP, CBC was one of the ones for accessibility and needs to address those. And I just didn't see anything that addressed updating accessibilities for parks or anything like that. So I'm thinking maybe there might be space to, because we came up with a half a million dollar park we have to install now.
Oh, wow.
Because it's not updated. So if it's in a plan, I think we can maybe address that.
One of the, sorry.
Please, go ahead.
Sorry, comment on that.
Yeah.
One of the things with, some of the conversation throughout the master plan about the open space recreation is that we knew that we were about to start an open space recreation plan.
Okay.
That is mandated by the state. Believe it or not, in Massachusetts, master plans are not mandated by the state. We're one of the only states in the country where it's not mandated. But open space and recreation plans are mandated, are mandatory. And so we've just started the update of that. And, and actually we're using Central Mass Regional Planning Commission.
Okay.
And so we, there was a lot of conversation that a lot is going to be reflected in, in that.
In that plan. Okay.
And there's, there's actually a whole section of that plan, Millie, where we have to go through and do a survey or, or an analysis or something on, on all of the parks about their ADA.
Yep. Compliance needs. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. So do you think it shouldn't be included in here?
Well, I don't know necessarily if it shouldn't be, but I know that we had conversations about it because we knew it was going to be in, in a, in its own separate plan.
Okay.
We'll put it on the table. If something out there is a comment, but perhaps not necessary.
Okay, sorry. I jumped back. That was it.
Anything else? Okay. And then I think we have transportation. Anything in transportation? One other thing that I don't necessarily, just in talking about modernizing communications, not necessarily an edit, but just think about things like even like electronic voting. A lot of communities are trying to modernize their town voting and there's still a lot of conversation about what works or doesn't work and initial investment in that. What that, what that looks like based on how many people show up, if you run out of odor, things like that. But if at some point, you know, as we modernize our technology, that could be something to consider in the future.
You mean a town meeting?
Yeah.
Or?
Electronic voting. That would be interesting. Okay. Any other comment? So what we wanted to do tonight was basically get everything on the table so that there is no other edit uncovered or considerate, considered edits. These are not final edits or things that are changing. These are just everything on the table. Additional thoughts or feedback as members of the public, Master Plan Steering Committee? Anyone who wants to submit comments, you can think further about it, whatever the case. Point was just get it all out. Did everybody get it all out? Everything is out. Okay. Everybody's got it out.
So Carrie, when do you want, if, if anyone else wants to submit comments?
So for anyone submitting comments, why don't we say, what's the Friday before our meeting? What's that be? So we meet again on February fourth. How about Friday noon? You close at noon. So Friday noon on the 31st. Does that work for you, Kathy, if you were to afford that? So as you get them, if you, what's the process? It goes to the planning department email and then you can share it with the board? Okay. All right. So we'll put Friday. Does that work for the board and giving everyone enough time to read through any sort of comments or feedback?
Okay.
Okay. Whoops. So that'll be.
Yeah, that's true.
The third's fine. Do you want to do the third? I mean, I feel like we're meeting on the fourth. I think if third, is the board okay with the third?
Yep.
I mean, is there, like, is there any, I don't know, I'm just looking at my schedule.
Okay.
Selfishly. Is there any immediacy to the fourth as opposed to the 18th?
I just didn't want to delay it.
Like I said, I'm just, I'm just looking at that selfishly. So.
What do we have for here? I'm sorry. I keep asking this question.
No, 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 that's okay.
Herein's we have. STERIS is the fourth, but STERIS is also the 18th likely.
Yeah.
So STERIS comes to.
Are we, are we going to start at six on February?
STERIS coming on the fourth. So on the fourth, we're meeting at six.
So do we have one more at six on the 18th to just talk about this?
And then on, so, so right, so STERIS, so starting at six on the fourth, STERIS is at seven. And they had, had talked about, and shared with Carrie, they, we asked them about what, you know, about how long they would need for a presentation initially. And, and they thought about forty to fifty minutes.
Yes. So that's going to be a.
Yeah. And then, and then the 18th is again possibly the continuation. It depends on what you get through on the third, I mean, on the fourth and then how we line up the peer review. And then you've got Bartlett on the 18th.
And Bartlett isn't, is, do we assume that they're not continuing again? Groundwater is all set?
Haven't received any revised documentation and I will have to get that, review it, have the groundwater committee meet on the 11th. And if it's wrapped up, we'll get your comments for the 18th.
So I, I'm open to either date. I don't know if the rest of the board is open to either date. I was just assuming we'd want to not delay it. So I guess it's, if you need that time, Kathy, that's.
Is there any detriment to delaying it? Anyway.
No, I mean, there's no, again, there's no, I mean, you know, you, you talked about, well, first we talked about, you know, bringing it over into 2020 so that we can put that on the calendar. Which made sense.
At least we didn't put them on.
Total sense. But so there's no, again, you're not up against any kind of statutory deadline. But, you know, the, you know, we want, we want to move forward with the implementation committee and, and, you know, to get going.
Well, could we keep it on the agenda? And if you get the feedback by then and we can get it by that meeting, we'll do it. And if not, we'll do it on the 18th. Is there harm in putting it on both agendas?
No. No, I don't think so.
I mean, I think from a master plan steering, the 18th would work better for us. I'd rather get yourself be well done and rushed.
Okay. It's up to you guys. I'm open.
As far as our comments back.
Sure. Sure.
Because it's a big group that has to be convened and actually go over everything that was said, so.
Okay.
I mean, I don't think two weeks after eighteen months makes a difference.
Yeah.
If it's well done versus crushed.
Yeah.
It ma, if it ma, it makes no difference to the board. It makes no difference to me. If that's easier for everybody involved, that's fine.
Okay.
If you want to put it on the, if for some reason you want to put it on the agenda just because you think it'll be ready, that's fine too, so.
Okay, but otherwise, we'll, the, the 18th is okay.
Yes. Okay, we have a few minutes left here. Does that settle what you need? Okay. Just quickly, we have to, we have additional business to cover our minutes.
Do we do the minutes on Tuesday? This is Tuesday night.
Yeah. At the last meeting, you did, it's the 19th, you pulled the 19th. And then you.
Everybody had a chance to look at these minutes?
Yep.
Are there any?
You're all set?
Okay, are there any comments? So these are actually, this document that we're looking at is minutes. These are my amendments to the minutes.
Yep.
As discussed, this was, this was abbreviated, so I just, I went back and watched the video and just included some additional information that we usually have. Are there any comments or amendments? Further amendments? No.
Nope.
Okay. Would anybody like to make a motion to approve the, the November 5th minutes as amended?
I make a motion that we approve the November 5th minutes as amended.
Okay, is there a second?
Second it.
Okay. Further discussion? All in favor? Okay, so the minutes passes amended. We do not have minutes for December yet or the last meeting, so those are not up for review. I don't think we have any other business on this agenda. Is there anything, bonds or A and Rs or lot releases we need? Okay, so there's nothing there. We'll skip subcommittee. So for the articles being due, Kathy, do you have everything you need?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And we'll have two placeholders, one for Seoul or one for hazardous. And then our next planning board meetings are listed here. Okay, that's it. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Done. Adjourned.